I've sat on my bio for twenty years and I'm a, you know, I help in both kinds of Kentucky. And I'm really excited after a really long period of time to see this group of people all together in the same room. It's not something that... it is something that when I moved here, I thought was just natural. Okay? And then I kind of had this big question mark over my head when I didn't see it happening, you know? And then I was condescendingly patted on the head a few times and said, "Oh, no, 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 that's not how it works around here." And I'm really glad to see it happen today in this room. My name is Tom Ruby. My wife and I bought property up on Persimmon Ave twenty years ago. And built a house on that in 2011. And our kids started going to school here in 2012. And there's no place else that we'd rather call home. I write about this place a lot. Bring people here to see our community, driving through town. I was driving through town yesterday, talking about college, talking about the distillery, talking about the Paragon Junction. And it's just really wonderful to see everybody coming together. And I think that this is a manifestation of your belief in the opportunity to do real change in the future instead of just talking about it, okay? Instead of paying somebody from outside, paying some firm from outside a bunch of money to produce a binder that sits on a shelf that you guys did not actually execute, okay? And that's some cost. We'll never get that back. So what we can do is move forward with stakeholders in this room. In the past and even today, I think that the four governments saw themselves as really distinct entities for good reason, right? You know, for valid reasons. But sometimes that entrenchment, I think, got in the way of, you know, community action. So I think it's entirely reasonable to say that decisions that happen in Danville affect Junction City and Paragon, right? Decisions that the county makes about urban service boundaries are affected by, you know, and affect the other communities. So I think that that's really important for us to think about going forward here. This master plan process will give us the opportunity to maintain our distinctiveness, okay? Within the communities, maintain that distinctiveness. But also really understand that this is a joint effort between all four of the communities, okay? I don't say that as a trite statement, okay? There's nobody here needs airborne up their spurs, nobody, okay? And I'm not gonna do that. You have to decide who you are and what you want, okay? Because the planning process can't go forward, and we'll lay this out a little bit later, but all planning... So I'll write it up there. We're gonna talk a little bit today about ends, ways, and means, okay? The ends are what we want, the actual policy. And as the lawmakers selected, as appointed officials, you in this room set the policy, okay? That's the ends that we want to achieve. We all know that we have various means at our disposal, not just tax money, but talent, you know, relationships, strategy, the ways that connects what you have at your disposal with the ends that you want to achieve, okay? And a master plan, Joe's gonna talk about that a little bit later this morning, actually very soon, okay? What that is, but that cannot be done absent this first step right here, okay? The desired ends. And in your communities, you all have desired ends, okay? County has different ends in the city, Paragon Junction. But to do a comprehensive plan for all four governments means that we're going to have to come up with stated measurable ends, okay, so that we can say, "How will I know when I see it?" That's one of my favorite terms when I work with governments, when I work with corporate clients. They'll say, "Well, I'm gonna do this," and I'll say, "Outstanding. How will I know when I see it?" Okay? How will you know when you've actually achieved that? It has to be detailed enough that you can actually know when you've achieved that, okay? So policy, strategy, a plan comes from strategy. You will find eventually that you will have to get into then doctrine, which is best... So if there's a word for policy, it's what? What is it that we're gonna achieve, right? Strategy is how? How are we gonna do that, okay? In a detailed plan. Doctrine is best, okay? What we believe is the best way to do things. And how do you all show your doctrine? You all have SOPs, policies, procedures, right? That you expect people to follow so that they're not doing it all, you know, trying to reinvent the wheel every time they see a pop-up. There should be a standard process for that. Baby steps, okay? There is a natural process to this plan and... You know, it's shocking to me sometimes as a... I'm a former strategist for the government, okay? I did strategy for the Air Force. I wrote the, I helped the Air Force write its twenty-year-out master plan and do planning for the government with State Department and DOD and DHS in conjunction with multiple other countries. And I've worked with small businesses here in this community and big international businesses. And it's shocking, everybody says, "Well, let's sit down and write a plan," okay? And it really, you know, if you sit down and try to spend an afternoon writing a plan, it's gonna be pretty crappy, okay? And so I have a saying that I'd rather, it's better to be right than first, okay? And I think that the strategic planning process takes a really deliberate timeline with deliberate steps. And I think that that's what your team is gonna drive, is gonna really, really walk them through. A very, very deliberate planning process, okay? So that at the end, you know that you have something that everybody's nodded their head and completely agrees with and that is executable, okay? The vast majority of organizations in the world do not write a plan, do not have a strategy for how to get to their ends, okay? They just, they don't. Of those that do decide to go down that planning process, the vast majority do not complete it. Of those that complete the strategy planning process, the vast majority do not actually execute their plans. Open question, anybody figure out... By the way, those are not my, those are actually hard and Harvard Business School does, like, has multiple, multiple studies on this. And it turns out to be true. Most people don't plan. Of those that do, most don't finish. Of those that do, most don't actually execute it. Anybody can come up with rationale why?
They veer off on a different path.
Okay, why might they veer off on different paths?
Different people, different ideas.
Okay, so...
No one goes in mind that everybody is gonna support and go for.
Yeah, so that's a really big one, so they don't actually know what their ends are, okay? What might be another one in elected governments?
Changeover.
Changeover, right? So in elected governments, you have, you know, changeovers. Somebody else gets elected and they come in and they go, "Uh, that's not my plan," okay? I saw this a lot in, you know, military is an organization which very, very deliberately changes its leadership, okay? So that there's never a fault of personality and one person stays in the place for too long a period. But if you really have a really good idea and you think that it's going to be very important, I saw it too, that in all of my organizations, I set things in process that my successors really couldn't, you know, stop without it really, you know, they would have to have really good reasons for that. So that's another good reason, new people come in. Any others? Situations change, the environment changes, you know? Okay, so especially the longer the duration of the plan is, out in the shadow of the futures, what we say, then the less likely it is to actually be implemented, okay? The sooner, the shorter the duration of the planning execution window, so like five years is a very executable plan, okay? Twenty years, almost certainly the plan will not be executed, okay? Is that your experience? Okay, so resolve today, I'm gonna ask you to resolve today to decide whether or not you're gonna wanna see this group, okay? The plan is not gonna be a panacea. It's not gonna solve hunger, it's not gonna give clean energy to the world, okay? This is a community of roughly thirty thousand people. I think that's just, to me, that's really heartening, okay? A community of thirty thousand people can really get something done in a fairly limited time window, okay? You don't have to solve hunger and you don't have to solve clean, you know... When I did Young Entrepreneur Academy at the high school a few years back, okay? The group that I was assigned to, they said they wanted to bring clean water to the world. These are five high school kids that wanted to bring clean water to the world, okay? And the way that they wanted to do that was to sell metal water bottles at Kroger, okay? And, you know, so when I gotta narrow it down to, well, how can you bring like clean water to a village? Well, we wanna bring clean water to Africa. I said, "Africa's a big place. It's really dry." It also has the second highest volume river in the world that flows through it, okay? Like, "What?" "Yeah, there's a river called the Congo. There's a lot of water in Africa," okay? But, so what I'm getting at here is let's remember who we are, okay? You're not gonna have to worry about solving all those old problems. I'm gonna turn this over to Joe for a little bit to talk about what a, what the master plan is, some state laws, okay? And then this morning, after that, I'll go through a set of five questions. These are derivative of the five questions that I asked at the Harvard Danville meeting way back in like 2014 when they were thinking about something, but I revise them a little bit. A little break for lunch and then we'll come back this afternoon and start something that we call the assumptions drill. Just getting us all on the same sheet of paper about what assumptions are of our community. Because when I do this with my clients, both government and corporate, we have assumptions that are so latent and underlying that we don't even realize that they're assumptions, okay? And so what we're gonna do this afternoon is start the process of exhaustively listing our assumptions, aggressively challenging our assumptions, and then empirically validating our assumptions. So that we know what the starting point is for ground truth going into the planning process. Is that all right? Anybody have any questions, like before I turn it over to Joe? How's that?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to come down to talk to you guys. My introduction is, I'm Joe Black. I do not work for Danville Oral County. I work for the Bluegrass Area Development District. A quick overview of who we are is we're a regional development organization that consists of Oral County as well as sixteen other counties. Now, I was hired to come in and help write the Danville Oral County Junction City Paragon Comprehensive Plan. Before I get more in depth about what a comprehensive plan is and all that exciting stuff, I wanna talk a little bit about one word Tom said a lot, and that was strategic. I think in the past, and this isn't Oral County specifically, but a lot of communities when they think about a comprehensive plan or planning and zoning, in sort of thought is best the planning commissioners do. You know, that's their plan, that's what they're gonna do, that's what development is. It's very cut and dry and almost they try and make it formulaic. Instead of thinking, "How can we strategic about the future?" The planning commission can't accomplish everything by itself. There needs to be increased coordination, there needs to be strategic thinking about how the effects of the actions that we take, how is it gonna look forward to the future? It needs to be dynamic as well as coordinated between the local governments. So another word that Tom said a lot was master plan. This, that's a term that a lot of communities use. It's interchangeable. The Kentucky statute calls it a comprehensive plan. So if you see those two words, they really mean the same thing. But when you hear the term master and comprehensive, it makes it seem like this is a big, huge document. And most of you brought your copies and, you know, you see it's a couple hundred pages. There are gonna be certain things that obviously the state statute had to be included. But think of it more as your plan, I think we're gonna start it. I'm the plan writer. I'll be very open. I live in Lexington. I was born and nethered in Elrod, in Brooklyn, South Carolina. I'm not here to write what I think Danville's plan should be. What we're starting to hopefully lay the groundwork for is what do you guys want this to be? It's a very complicated question. We're not gonna answer that today or next month or in the future. And using that as the strategic thought process is who do we wanna be? It's very dynamic, it's always gonna change, you know? It can change year to year, but that's the overall goal. Is who do we wanna be, how do we wanna develop? So now I'm gonna get into the fun stuff, what Kentucky statute is. While we're here is to do planning and zoning and try to be correct about future is you have, communities have to have a comprehensive plan by Kentucky statute. The statute says, "The planning commission of each unit shall prepare a comprehensive plan which shall serve as a guide for public and private actions and decisions to ensure the development of public and private property in most appropriate relationships." Really, what I think the key words of that is, is it's a guide to help assure the decisions of public and private property in the most appropriate relationships. That could mean a lot of things and that's where I think a lot of people can get sort of caught up in the weeds is a comprehensive plan is not telling you what goes where. A comprehensive plan isn't zoning by itself. The comprehensive plan is the most broad document that's gonna sort of detail the vision for the future. This is just at this, almost the starting point for a lot of planning. Zoning is more of a tool to help implement the comprehensive plan than the comprehensive plan is a tool for zoning. That we're gonna start with this process, we're gonna start as broad as possible. Almost a word, you might even wonder, you know, how does this relate to the comprehensive plan? But we try to get all that and get more specific to actually then get into the details and the weeds while I think that Tom's gonna talk about, and the strategies to make sure the plan is actually implemented itself. So before I start to talk about, give away to what a comprehensive plan is, I'm gonna start talking about what a comprehensive plan is not, just so we can sort of get on the same page. This is a talk I like to do at every single meeting because inevitably there's not many people get to the weeds what a comprehensive plan is. And so the first thing I wanna say is comprehensive plan does not dictate what goes where. It is at a, as simple as a guide, you know? That it doesn't have to be followed strictly, there are reasons, and then it can be amended at any time. But one thing that Tom mentioned is that if we try and plan twenty years in the future, we're probably gonna fail. It's almost impossible to do twenty years in the future. The good news is Kentucky statute says we have to at least review this plan every five years. So we're not gonna come up with this super detailed plan twenty years and we can't lock into it. We're gonna have to constantly review it. And I almost want to sort of introduce it as the starting point for an ever-changing plan. You know, the work isn't gonna end as soon as the plan is passed. As much as we wish it, it could be and we don't have to worry about it for the future. It constantly needs to be reviewed to ensure that it's still up to date, the vision still holds, so it can still, make sure the plan's being implemented right. Also say the comprehensive plan is not this rigid and flexible. It can be amended at any time in addition to having to review every five years. And the comprehensive plan does not actually change any zoning. Once the comprehensive plan is adopted, we're not gonna, the zoning map doesn't change. No one's property, it suddenly becomes something different. It is looking twenty years into the future. And so we start to have these discussions that can be sucked into what is Danville now? Or what is Oral County now instead of what should Oral County be twenty years into the future? And try to keep that mindset going forward. So talking about what a comprehensive plan is, is just a plan that outlines the community's long-term vision. There's different required sections by Kentucky statute. The first is the goals and objectives. So we're gonna start at that as the most broad level is who do we wanna be? What are the goals that we're aspiring to become? And then what are some of the objectives to how we get there? It's a roadmap for decision making and a guide for future land use decisions, both from AKLA and the planning commissioners. Again, it is simply just a guide. Typically covers a wide range of topics, looks ahead to the future, say ten, twenty, thirty years. If you guys wanna plan thirty years in the future, we can do that as well. And unless you re-adopt or amend it every five years. There are four required sections. I talked about the goals and objectives. These are typically the most broad and what are we gonna do first. But in addition, the three other required sections are the land use, transportation, community facilities element. Really, all the Kentucky statute says, or a few of those, is to show what the desirable development patterns are. It's not super in depth beyond that. The comprehensive plan at that point can be anything that you guys would like it to be. The Kentucky statute says that the comprehensive plan may include any additional elements such as, without being limited to, community renewal, housing, flood control, pollution, conservation, natural resources, regional impacts, and other programs which in the judgment of the planning commissioners will further serve the purposes of the comprehensive plan. So I'll go a little more in depth on what the previous plan talked about in depth. But also I wanna make sure that for clear is this is the opportunity for you guys to do what you think is best for the community. We can talk about any sort of topics that you think is important. This is the option for the community taking initiative and not just the plan writer, so. In the past, I've seen some communities do some very creative things for the comprehensive plan. There's typical other sections I included that we can talk about for the economic development and housing, which are very common and sure important topics that we talked about. But you can even get more into weeds. When I was down in Georgia, I worked a lot of rural communities. Broadbent was a section they included and discussed every comprehensive plan. Because they knew that without Broadbent, we're not gonna develop and continue at all times. And so we wrote those sections. In addition, there's some sections such as public safety, flood control. It's an opportunity for you guys to really say, "What is important to us? What should we plan for for the future going forward?" So I've got the list of the previous elements that are included from plan. So if we look at the previous plan and talk about goals and objectives, population, economic conditions, environmental considerations, housing and historic preservation, community facilities, transportation, existing and future land use, as well as implementation, so. Keep that in mind. So if we talk about the process for how to develop a comprehensive plan, what we're gonna do is we're gonna start as broad as possible. And I think Tom's gonna lead the great meeting today and he'll say, you know, "What is this after the comprehensive plan?" You know, we're not gonna keep from a map and sort of change just different things. But to reiterate, we're starting as broad as possible. That it's very difficult to write a plan if you don't have a vision. What's the direction for the plan? You know, what's the direction for development? It helps us to sort of have that as a beginning point. So that's where we're gonna start off first, we're gonna develop a vision. Once we have that vision, we're gonna come up with some goals and objectives to help achieve that vision. Then we're gonna decide what elements are important to help achieve those goals and objectives. And then write the plan to help support the goals and objectives. After the plan is written, then we move into implementation, which is one point I wanna talk about. It's gonna require coordination between the planning commission and local governments, which I think is part of the reason why we're here today. That there's no saying that we can plan what we want, but if there's no coordination, we're not gonna really get anywhere in the future. We can hope to find a service boundary, but ultimately the county and the cities are the ones who have to help run the infrastructure out there. Without this increased coordination, the plan is doomed to fail. And I think that's the greatest starting point we're at today with everyone in the room. So to go through the planning process, the first, I like to divide the plan almost in half. The first thing we're gonna do is develop that vision and goals and objectives. We're gonna try to be as broad as possible, gather as much information as possible, both from you guys as well as the public, on who Danville wants, Danville, Oral County, and those cities want to be. So the first step while we're developing the goals and objectives is gonna be a lot of public engagement as well as these elected officials choose. I've already started to come up with a schedule to meet out in all the local governments, AKLA. There's gonna be surveys and we're gonna try and find ways to reach out as many people as possible. As much as we like to say we can host, you know, fifteen meetings and we're gonna get hundreds of people to these meetings and have robust, you know, engagement, we have to understand that as much as we like that to happen, it's not gonna happen. So we need to figure out different ways to get and reach out to people to where they are and how to get some public engagement that way. So far, we've got a couple events that are highlighted, including the Danville Oral County football game. It's an opportunity to reach out to a lot of people. There's a Paragon Turtle Derby. And so as we go through this process, it'd be good to think about those opportunities to reach out to as many people as well. Once we've developed the goals and objectives, then that's sort of where we get to the next phase, which I like to call the technical phase, which is the goals and objectives according to Kentucky statute is the guide for comprehensive plan. At that point, I will have a better understanding as well of what's the direction that the county's headed? Where do we wanna be? And then the plan is simply, how do we achieve those? And so that requires a lot of coordination, talking with the staff as well as business leaders, housing professionals, and people on the ground with the knowledge, to figure out, you know, what are the obstacles? You know, we've got our direction, how do we get there? And the plans at that point will be written to represent those goals and objectives. So I think a great starting point for this is to simply, let's talk about what the previous plan was. And I think what caught me about the previous plan was on that first page when it talks about the goals and objectives, it outlines for date and location concerns. There was three that was listed. First was the growth management for Danville, the conversion of rural agricultural land to urban uses, and provision of adequate infrastructure to control growth of Junction City. Now, if we look at the previous comprehensive plan, I'd like to know what was in the dots? Have you guys reviewed the comprehensive plan? Were there some ways that we can look into it a little bit better? And just that sort of starting point, where are we starting from with the comprehensive plan?
I think it's really important that the, I'll jump in and help you, Joe, sorry, but you need to decide whether or not you're going to amend the previous comprehensive plan or are you going to write a new comprehensive plan, okay? And that all starts with, do you think that the previous comprehensive plan's goals and objectives were what you, you as the elected stakeholders or the elected representatives of your constituents think that they ought to be today?
It can be both. I mean, I don't think it's entirely obsolete, but there's parts of it that need to be modernized maybe or that aren't up to date. So we don't have to be, you think, but we do, we necessarily...
No, that's a very good point. That's a very good point. But I think that that's the very, most important starting point for you guys. And you don't have to make that decision this morning, okay? You're gonna make it pretty soon, is do you, are you looking at a slight tweak, a rewrite, or a new plan?
I'll just follow up on what Tom said there is we're not trying to make that decision today. But it is a good starting point to know if the previous comprehensive plan is not being used, I think that's a pretty good sign as a starting point that something's not working. And so if we can have that, start that conversation now, we're starting to figure out. What would you guys like to make it useful? How can we make it more than just a planning and zoning company?
I think it's a little overwhelming to look at this book and think that we're going to do it all over again. And there are impacts, but you probably know, having the suggestion that this, like, counts as just start from scratch. I mean, that seems like a lot.
As I said, we're gonna try as far as we can as possible. Please don't think... Please don't think that your job in this room is to go through this and make line edits. Okay? That's not your job in this room, is to go through here and make line edits. Your job is to, is to do the very, very high-level picture. This is who we are and we want to be. And we'll start with that this morning. So don't, don't, please don't feel overwhelmed by this process because Joe's going to lead you through this under McHale's guidance, you know?
Your job, or further what Paula said, managing 160-some pages becomes overwhelming. I'd like to see this document be more, no more than 30, 40 pages so that people can grab it and learn from it and work from it.
Shouldn't the assessment merely begin with a review of what the goals and objectives are now? To see if they're applicable. If they're applicable, I mean, you may not, it may be the plan only changes by ways and means and the ends remain the same. And perhaps they could be more efficient as Tom espouses. However, it seems like to me you don't know where you want to go unless you see what's current and it is still even applicable. And it very well may be.
Some of those goals may have been set, maybe, you know, maybe we're past that point. Or hopefully, a lot of those have been...
He's not asking you to do that this minute, right? Yeah, I think the best thing for him is we're not going to ask you what specific changes you want in the comprehensive plan. What I'm more curious is, have you guys used the comprehensive plan over the past five years?
I'm not sure we have one. I just came into office in January. So I've always had been asked for the comprehensive plan to this point. So when I heard that, I'm like, oh yeah. I've heard those with a teacher, I have a nurse and a teacher. We all both have comprehensive plans or plans for what I was doing at the time. But a lot of them, like you say, sit on the, we did a lot of them, but we never referred back to them. So we're going to do something, there's going to be something that we can check for.
This was written in 2017. I think we can all agree that our way of life has definitely changed since 2017, especially given through going through COVID and everything. We're now doing things a lot differently than we did in 2017. So there may actually be a lot more to this than we are anticipating that we're going to have to change. We're going to have to look at this. So, but I would say a good portion of this has not been met yet. Especially when I start looking at like transportation section and other things. So, but I think that we do need to make some significant changes out of this, given how we live our lives today compared to 2017.
Seems like the middle portions will be more things, the add with update. Population census is outdated. It was 2010. Traffic patterns, even the businesses listed, you know, you could work with JJ, it's a current update. So a lot of this is going to be your work updating. And it sounds like our work is for the goals and objectives. And maybe the future land use may happen.
A great concern that has to end this is we have 800 to 1,000 jobs open in a community of 30,000. And just again last night on the news, the starting pay with a bonus on the front end for someone in the detention center in Fayette County is $50,000 a year. That's over twice what we pay at our detention center here. The jobs that are going to come to E-Town are going to be like Toyota when it opened up 35 years ago, where 55 counties were immediately driving four to five people in a vehicle to go to work every day. And I'm sure it's still quite like that. We're going to have a loss of both the employees when E-Town's new battery center opens up. And that's just one example of what I'm concerned with, the outmigration of workers that we desperately need right now.
We're going to talk about that as well when we do our assumptions drill. That's a, that's a great, that's a great comment that will inform your next sessions when you're actually defining what your ends are, the strategic ends.
Joe, was one of your questions whether the comp plan is being used in the present? The planning commission, I'd have the privilege to work with, uses it every meeting as justification for zoning amendments. And this is more a comment than an objection, but every time that we flip through the plan or look for criteria to uphold or shoot down a zoning amendment, it seems like you can find something in there to support just that in the argument. And maybe that's the way that these things have to be, as case law, I'm sure. But that's, that's a feature of this plan that I perceive.
Henry, Henry is the attorney for PNC and I thank Henry for being here. He came at our request. You're not saying that as a positive. You're making a comment. I know you're just making a general comment. But I think that you're probably not making that as a positive comment.
I think it's something to bear in mind and know that that's the way that, to my use, the way that the current plan is operated. About that case law, there are things that say the comp plan shouldn't be a straitjacket. You don't have to adhere to every single point in there. But it's just, I just want that in people's minds as we're going through this process.
Joe, you listed those three concerns that we're going to know of, comp plan. And for example, it says growth management for the city of Danville. As an outside planner, what does that mean? When it says growth management as a concern?
As a concern? I, that can mean a lot of things. I think that's a very broad statement. And I think that's one of the things to look into is growth management could be, or is it growth management that we're going too fast? Is it growth management that we're going too slow? Is it, we're sprawling? That's a very broad statement. But to me, that makes it sound like we need to take planning and growth seriously, regardless of what it is. You know, there's still an identity problem. But there's probably an opportunity to get more into, more in-depth on that. And if we look at the comprehensive planning process just in general, are there any questions on sort of what we're trying to undertake with this process? Or how this is going to, should we not as well?
I think I want to say one thing just in response to Henry's comment. I think it's important that the document, yeah, I think it's critical rather that it's not a straitjacket. You know, I think, I think what is up to the planning commission is a balancing of equities. That's what every case is asked to do. So the document should be aspirational, but not limiting in any faction. It should be about positive freedoms, not negative freedoms. And it should be something that those that have been appointed should balance. That's the point of the plan. And I think when rubs happen, they occur in process, not in the comp plan. So I know we're talking about comp plan today, but the natural extension of that are text amendments to create a better process that is more, that is hampered by straitjackets. We're not going to talk about it today probably, but the flume too much is seen as the cross that has to be born by the planning commission. And case law is abundant declared, it's but an aspect, one component of the comprehensive plan. And so for instance, I object as a practitioner to requiring flume amendments prior to any zone change. I think it's wholly unnecessary. I think it's unhealthy. And I don't think it's the way the vast majority of Kentucky communities operate. And as a practitioner, I like the document being aspirational because it's those appointed there to balance the equities. And we shouldn't be hampered by things like a flume. They are aspirational. And those that are in the room, balance the equities and decide what's best for the community. So I think it's important we understand the roles of these documents are not law. They are policy and they are aspirational. And I think that is positive freedom to allow nimble movement by whatever circumstances occur. So I appreciate the agility that the document provides and I think is something that should be preserved.
I agree with everything you said, Stephen. I guess the, what I wanted to point out is, when something goes in the goals and objectives, that it's not going to be a mandate on every case and that there is that agility that you talk about.
Exactly. And I think that's based upon for everybody in the room to realize we're creating something that is aspirational. And that it is to be balanced, but not to be seen as a bullet point we have to check off on every test.
So talk about the roles of the elected officials for five seconds, Stephen. You know, what, where they end up, so they're, you know, planning and zoning commission got a role. The elected officials have a role. As things come to you all, there, that final step to verify that something's moving forward consistent with the interpretation of the community ideology, which is what this document has been is. Which is pretty, pretty heavy interpretation. But then, trying to think how, what, what thing does the comp plan need from the elected officials on the front side? Does that make sense? Like, so, you know, you don't want to be in a position to judge whether or not a development's good or bad. That's not, that really, that's not what you're, you're wanting to do. You're, you know, Mr. Ellis has just talked about wanting to be acknowledging the need to grow and to be pro-growth. So economic development is a tenant to everything that goes on in terms of land use, in terms of infrastructure placement, all those things. And so having a goal of economic development in the comp plan is a good idea. And then trying to establish what that is, you know, trying to think, helps me fill out that layer.
You're right. Earl, you just said something that's very, very important. I was planning on talking about this in a little bit when I got back up there. On delineation between elected leaders are policymakers. You are the policymakers. You appoint the leaders, okay? The leaders manage the doers. Do you understand? So you have policymakers, leaders, and doers, okay? Your job is not to be doers. Your job is to oversee the leaders. The leader's job is to oversee the doers, okay? The planning process, the plan, you set the ends, okay? We, as a, as a group of stakeholders, develop the ways, okay? All those individual tasks, and I'm going to, I'll draw this out, are going to be the actual things that you're going to give money to the leaders to oversee the doers to do on a calendar. Does that make sense? That's delineation of responsibilities. Very important. I can go, I had every plan to draw that up as soon as, as soon as Joe is done.
There's one problem to that. We have limited assets in this community when it comes to doers. Often times the doers become part, are the policymakers, are the leaders.
So that, that's all part of our means, okay? You're, no argument, no argument there.
Well, I just tell you that we've got all the buildings of the county here today. In the past, I think it's just been, because the comprehensive plan has been developed by just the last few. And if you look at the old one here, our old one, I think needs to be mostly a rewrite in Elkhorn Mountains. Development and stuff like that in certain areas of the county and others, just completely lack that. I'd say I'm just glad we've got everybody here. This is the first time I've ever heard anything about a comprehensive plan in the whole time I've lived here in the county. When we're doing one. So I just think it's good that we're here, that we can work all together. And each community getting input, being involved in it. That's really, I think they've been much more, I want to complete rewrite this guy.
So Mayor Miller's point in some ways, is something I'm going to think about as we've been talking is, probably only a handful of people in this room that actually know this document, know what it actually means, know, know why it's written. I think it would be imperative that all the elected leaders, mayors, judge executives kind of get together, whether it's quarterly, you know, bi-yearly, whatever, to review the comp plan and to really understand it. You know, probably if we're going to rewrite it, which most likely will have to happen, maybe those meetings happen a little more frequently. But I think it's, it's imperative that they have a grasp of it from the top down, understanding.
Echoing what Mayor Miller just said, I was a board member of the Economic Development Partnership. And in this very room about three years ago, I mentioned to the board, of which I was a participant, that everyone in here as leaders in the community needs to consider not only being at the Forkland Community Play and Christmas Dinner, which turns out more than 300 people a year, but the corporations ought to buy tables. As I was walking out, and my hearing is still very good at my age, as I was walking out, I heard one of the board members say, where in the hell is Forkland? That is part of what we're concerned about, about Archville, Pittsburgh, Perryville, Forkland, and what the mayor was saying a moment ago. Don't forget Junction, and they're also...
I'm sorry.
They're the people that make you junction, and they're also very good at making junctions. I'm not junction, but still. It's like the biggest league. More input from everybody in the, in the whole county, rather. Like I think it may not be in the matrix, but we do.
So I'm going to go ahead and wrap up. Are there any last questions about the comprehensive plan or the process itself before I turn back over to Tom to continue to answer these questions?
Joe, thank you. Good job. Why don't we, I think it's very important that we take our rigor that, it's very interesting. So since the, since the last comp plan was written, pretty much all of Danville is still the same, okay? But nobody in the local government was, was even in office when that last one was done, okay? And people don't know who's who from here. So Mayor Junction just had to leave, okay? He's on the chemo and he's sick. But I'll ask Ms. Paula to talk a little bit about Junction and, you know, and just say a few words why it's important and why they think that it's important to be.
I think if we're going to have growth in Bull County, it's going to be Junction and Parable. I mean, the city is really saturated to me. It's got a lot of growth and a lot of good things going. I love it. But if you're going to really grow a county, you've got to go out. So our two areas are the only, the biggest things that you've got to go on out. So we want to see, number one, we want to see the same plan for Danville as the same plan for Junction City. You know, we want the same rules across the county so that if we have planning or growth, that we can't have like 25 good on a state highway with one subdivision as opposed to it has to be fifty other. We want the same thing. And I don't know if that's true or if that's not, but that's just why I'm here. So I want to make sure we're all included and we have the same opportunities to grow healthily. And that's, that's our plan. A lot of people don't know, but we had like three hotels in Junction City back in the...
We have, we have two, we have two hotels in Allen Springs.
Yes, and four.
Does anybody even know where Allen Springs is?
I do know that.
There were, there were resort hotels in Allen Springs. Ms. Paula and I took a drive recently through the county together.
And I knew that people had stopped on the train, the whistle stop, and they got the healing Allen waters. And that's what they did. They stopped at the Allen waters and they set their little spa back in the 30s or 40s or whatever it was. And then they go on through, but Junction City at that time wasn't even Junction City. And then they gone through, but Junction City at that time wasn't even Junction City. I can never remember the name of the street. But, no, it's Gores, Goresburg. Goresburg. I can never remember that name. Yeah. So there's some real interesting history here and we need to go back and remember that history and. I mean, we have huge, my husband and I in our life, can't remember all the businesses in Junction City. You know, lumber yards and all, I could go on and on, but I just, we want it to grow.
Very interesting that you just said that, okay? I've, when, I bring a lot of visitors through and I show them the county, like everybody gets the county tour when they come through. People from the big cities, and one of the questions I get is, why is, why is there even a Junction City and a Perryville in this town? Like, why would they even have those, like, when there's a big Danville? And, and I have to remind them that, well, back in the day, 15 miles is a really, really long way, okay? Before there were cars, right? You know? And, and, and market towns are, are, are a thing. So we, when we did our drive recently, there's a lot of people that would be very shocked at the number of homes that are going up in certain places that they're just completely unaware of, okay? And, and what that means necessarily, like, what does Junction City's growth necessarily mean to Josh Morgan and Danville's utilities, okay? Mr. Mayor, you're up.
Uh, what?
Tell, tell us about you and, and your friends at the table here this morning. Um, this is very important because people don't know you.
Well, we're proud of you here. I am going to, I've been in Perryville about nine years, nine years. And I've been in the whole county since, it's not, I wouldn't put Clay County. But I'm proud of the, the county here, it's quite a deal. I know our, our councilman here, very passionate, I see him, very, very grown, a little bit. We don't want to go to the extent, you know, that basically Danville is, as big as they are, but basically what I would like to see in that area is growing up where we can, place we stay alive and survive. Our city, if we don't see some kind of growth or something down in the area, I'm afraid that the city may just have to go under. But I'm gonna try as hard as I can to keep it. You know that, you know, Danville's a crossroads of, you know, two major roads, 127 and 150. Also, Perryville is at a conjunction also, you know, 68 and 150. And there's a lot of traffic coming through there. Coming through the town, I think I've had Robbie Mace, who's down there, he sits out in the fourth, somehow, in town. Says he has counted in excess of 100 tractor trailers coming through there during the long time from the bulk of the areas. From 68 and 150. That's probably a lot of traffic coming up there in and out from here in those towns. We see a lot of stuff coming through there, but you don't have anybody to stop or anything there. We have a heritage there, you know, the battle and battlefield. But what I would like to see down there is, you know, we would have something where people couldn't have stayed, you know, some kind of logic. Just want to have the city, make sure people, it's not that far, it's not that Danville anyway, but we'd like to see something that grows down in our area, you know, to help us make it survive and be a, just basically here in Danville, we have a lot of, of, of people that come through to visit just because of the battle and battlefield, business, battlefield, emergency road, where they have, you know, relatives, you know, the old, basically merchant in the, 1970s, 1860s, 1950s, you know, in that area at that time. Our, our town, I mean, our town, in the past 200 years, we've not seen any growth whatsoever. And I think we'd like to say something like that happens in the area. We make that agriculture, the community surrounded by agriculture, but the agriculture is not a one, it must survive down there.
I love your community, Mayor. I absolutely love your community and I, thank you for bringing, thank you for coming and bringing your councilman today.
Well, the, the thing I've got down there is we've got people that want to, I've got, one guy's in, in touch with me that wants to put business in, that he wants to be in the city limits, but the business that he put in there were about saturated with everything in, in town. With, you know, land use and stuff like that inside the city limits, I'm sure he's been able to go outside. And he won't come unless he's in, inside, you know, the, you know, the city limits. He sees the potential, they put, actually what the loan was, it is like, basically a truck stop. Because he sees the potential for trucks that are coming through there, with quite a few of them, they could get them to stop and, you know, be viable for at that area. I still got a, another guy that's pointing to maybe start doing some housing development. But we don't have that inside the city, we want to be inside the city. So that's, that's where a word I have at that.
Okay. So this is a very good thing that I think that we can, like, I'm, I'm not gonna solve this for you. Dylan McHale aren't gonna solve this for you, but I think that talking about some of the things we're gonna talk about today might help you, you know, come closer to solve it for you. City? Danville?
I think there's one thing that the mayor said that I think is interesting, and I think it parrots exactly what happens in Danville, is that oftentimes interested businesses require, being in an incorporated city, for development as part of their business plan. And so what's fascinating about that is most oftentimes those type of developments will require some type of annexation. And that is viewed sometimes by other local governments as aggression by the city of Danville or something of that nature. When quite the contrary, it tends to be a requirement of the developer to seek those actions to develop the business. It's just a fascinating, so what he said is true with that particular development, certainly happens in Danville routinely. Where annexations are requested, but they're viewed by others as some type of demonstrative activity, when that's rarely the case. So I think part of the healthy conversation about this today is understanding what roles we play. And in development, sometimes that means annexation. Not because the city quote-unquote wants something or is being greedy, but it, it more clearly aligns with the business plan of the developer. So, but I think we all need to appreciate that fact, because it sometimes is an elephant in the room.
Agree also.
It's also important to respect the people that live in the area that you're looking to, to annex that chose to live outside the city limits. And essentially in some ways are being forced now to live in the city limits. So it's a double-edged sword. That you, you have to, you know, businesses are good and they help our community, but you have to respect the people that chose to live certain places, those are certain things, and now things are being thrown upon them, they don't want.
Well, and if it's an, if it's not a consent annexation, I would agree with you. And there's, there's a process under the law for people to voice discontent over an unconsensual annexation. However, consensual annexations are where people agree to do it, and that by a vast majority has been 95% of any annexation that the city has ever done. I've only ever been a part of my 15 years of one non-consensual annexation. And people have voting rights and things like that protected under the law. But annexation is rarely, if ever, a forced entry into the municipal corporation. And, but I think we have to appreciate that. It's not an affront, and there are mechanisms under the law for it.
Earl? You know, I, I do appreciate his comments, because that is something that, that is, you know, a little bit of, you've got to decide really what, from your view, from the elected officials' view, what you want Perryville to be, right in that sentence. And then you have to embrace that then with, with policies, which is your responsibility. So I, I, you know, my annexation, like the, the immediate boundary of Perryville, you know, from the utility side, I've been exposed to some of, some of the conversations around Perryville, like, but it's harder when it's not in the city because there's different services and different standards in the city of Junction City versus in the county. So they, they, there's a different development standard and things like that, which is reasonable because the infrastructure's different. And so on, on a policy level, you all really influence that. Same thing for the city of Danville.
Talk about the city this morning and why, like, why are you participating in this today?
Well, you know, I, I've not been looking at it like that. I've been looking at it like, what, what do you, what is the comp plan need? What input does the comp plan need from this group of people? And really, there's a series of questions that, that need to be asked. I don't really have those formulated necessarily, but one of them is, is do you want growth and what type of growth? And so if you're answering those two questions for you, then you're gonna ask that the comp plan consider some type of, of commercial development? Some type of, do you want dense housing, or do you want single-family residential, or do you want multifamily housing? What, what do you think that your, your infrastructure and your community, what, what does that need to look like in elected officials' eyes? Right? And so you, those are things you need to try to answer, and then you build the goals and objectives around what you, you're trying to steer towards the end, right? So the same thing for Danville, you know, we, ours is complex because of the industrial footprint that already exists. And so, so it's, you know, we're trying to fit things in and transportation, you've got to think about how, how you move around with it. You know, for the city, inter-local connectivity is critical. You know, I've talked about that a lot. You know, we've got one crossing of the railroad, of the railroad, we've got one crossing of watch run. And so that tends to hinder our inter-local economic activity. The people on the north side struggle to, to interact with the people on the south side. So as the comp plan's being developed, we can't recommend that we only do residential on the north side. Because how are they going to get to Walmart? Or how are they going to get to their goods or their retail services, right? Like, so we, you, a comp plan, you have to think about things like that. We, we have to acknowledge. So then if you, if you do want residential growth, then we have to either figure out better transportation, so therefore that would be a goal. Or we would have to allow for some commercial or retail development on the north side to accommodate additional housing. You know, and so it's a complicated thing. But it is good that.
Not so much, though. You've got three communities together. That's what I'm saying. Junction City, as Paula's kind of pointed out, has had a real boom in, in housing. It's just kind of helped that, helped that you don't have to overly develop the north side of.
No, I totally, I totally agree with that. I think, I think Junction City is poised to, to really expand from a residential perspective. But then that, those elected officials need to, need to define that.
Yes, that's right.
They need to say, they need to be vocal about that, and they need to, to lean into that, if that's what they want. So then therefore, if you want residential, then they have to have as a goal to develop the infrastructure that residential housing units need, like quality of life things, like a park. So is there a park in Junction City that, that the city, then therefore, we, then if there's not, then what, what, what one of the goals is, is to develop parks. So if a residential development comes, then maybe that's more likely to go forward if it's providing the quality of life features. That the community needs. And I, I know she's working on that as a magistrate. So all of those things are things that, that local folks need to.
I make a suggestion. I know 90% of the people, but there's a few people that could introduce who we are when we speak. Like I call a magistrate in the district too. I know 90% of you, but there's a few that, you know, I don't know, so.
I'm just gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the judge to talk and then we'll do a couple introductions. How's that? Mayor, Joe.
Well, first of all, I want to say I'm very impressed with this group of people this morning. You, the county, the city, the planning and zoning, economic development, you get us all in the same room. It's a very impressive audience. And I think one thing we have to do is be good listeners. We have to listen to what everyone is saying and take all of that into account. Whether you're a Danvillian, a Perrivillian, Junction Cityan, you're still whole counties. Because all of these cities are in, in oil county. And what affects each respective city affects whole county. And I think we have to look at each other in that way, be receptive, to open ideas. The world changes and it changes quickly. I grew up in a time when there was railroad, was, was transportation, and so was the Greyhound bus. I had a lot of family members, when they'd come to visit from the mountains, they came on the Greyhound bus. Pulled up in Danville and someone in my family would go pick them up and bring them to my grandmother's house. But you look at us now and we have different types of transportation. And especially if you're talking about travel, tourism, you know, Uber, Lyft. All those different things now play a part of our transportation system, getting people to and from their destinations where they need to go, where they're coming into. We also have a regional airport, you know, that has really grown since I was a kid. I can remember, you know, just barely a thing back when I was a kid, because I lived in Junction for a while. So Junction and Perryville both are very special to me and I'm very interested in their future. Because I grew up in, in both of those cities. Worked in Danville my entire life, you know, from the time I was 16 years old, I worked in Danville. So I think there is a common ground amongst all of us. We just have to figure out what that common ground is to move forward. I think we're gonna be able to do that, but we've got to be good listeners in the process.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jamie Gay, magistrate of District Five, which is basically Danville, downtown Danville. But I, I wanted to, I said something to Mayor Miller earlier and Mayor Douglas as well. One of the things I think it's important just that people recognize, that people have noticed that Junction City is not in this plan that was done in 17 and 18. And it's, I'm glad that Junction City is at the table this time, and it's important that they are at the table. But they self-withdrew themselves from the table last time. So I think, I just wanted to make that clarification.
Yeah, there was some controversy about that, so I'll have to give the history on that.
Right. But so they, so that's the reason that they're.
The important thing is that they're here now.
That they're here now.
That's your point.
That's my point, that they are here now, and that's important because as, as magistrate Bonner has already indicated and others, both Perryville and Junction City do have a lot to do with our county's future moving forward. And it's important that we recognize that and all work together to help that future come true.
Okay. We're gonna do a lightning round of everybody introduce yourselves and give one sentence. Who you are and one additional sentence, if you want to use the one sentence. Come here. Start, or sorry, coach, start.
Trilly Bottom, Volcan Justice Executive.
Steve Sleeper, it's gonna be a very long sentence, sorry, but.
No, no, it's fine.
Sleeper can be an unfortunate last name sometimes, but Mr. Joe Black, if you've ever seen the movie Meet Joe Black, you know who Joe Black was. But I just want to say, I've been a Danville, Vol County citizen for slightly under 20 years. And a testament to this community and what it has to offer is both my adult children, who had never lived here before, moved here to this community after I did, one 10 years ago and one five years ago. So I'm great vested interest in seeing us grow in the right way.
You're it.
Tom Ellis, First District magistrate, Vol County, West Two-thirds now. That's enough.
I'm Julie Wagner. I just realized I've been here 27 years. I go so fast. I am the county administrator for the fiscal court.
Again, Jamie Gay, magistrate. I've lived here now 35 years, which is also hard to believe that I've been in this great community for that long. And I also had the good fortune of serving 10 years on the city commission, and I'm now on my second term on the fiscal court. So I like to think that I kind of bring a perspective. So I like to think that I kind of bring a perspective of city and county government together.
Paula, Paula Bodner, I'm magistrate of District Two, which is Junction City Parks for Iron Island and Ghost Pike, out that way a little bit. And I have been here sixty-one years, five years I lived somewhere else, but other than that, I've been here sixty-four years. So it's really important to me and my family and friends, that it grows and does well.
I'm Carlos Schmuller, I'm the mayor of Parable. I've actually lived down here forty-eight years, moved down here in, uh, Clay County, grown, loved the place. Really love Parable and just want to see it prosper and become obsolete in the county.
Tim Sampson, fourth-term councilman in Parable. I was born in Danville and I grew up in Junction City and I moved to Parable about thirty years ago.
Robert Cronell, Parable, Kentucky. Been in Boyle County, Parable for twenty-four years.
Jason Pruitt, councilman in Parable, born and raised in Boil County, been here my entire life.
Steve Beatty, Parable City Councilman, been in Parable since two thousand fourteen. Born and raised in Boil County, been in Boil County sixty-seven years.
Good morning, Henry Smith, planning and zoning attorney, primarily for the last six years, but ten years on and off. I'm here to learn, here to listen.
Terry Mann, I'm a Danville representative on planning and zoning. My wife and I have lived in Danville for, I guess, fifteen years. Prior to that, we lived in Lexington, New Jersey and Wisconsin.
Jenny Holland, city commissioner. I guess I had the unique opportunity to work in planning and zoning through years, including giving the comp plan. And it gives me a great appreciation for the planning commission and how hard they work, so.
J.J. Harris, president and CEO of Danville Boyle County Development Corporation and the Industrial Foundation. And I want to thank all the, the cities and towns that continue to support us economically, financially, through the development efforts. Thank you all.
Josh Schutze, I'm economic development staff with the Development Corporation, work with J.J.
Little Coffee and City Manager, been here quite a while now. Had the chance to work with everybody and I appreciate Boil County a lot. It's good community.
Rick Serra, Danville City Commissioner. Lived in Danville for thirty-eight years and I continue to say quality of life is very important to economic development all across the county. Certainly I concentrate on Danville, but people come here and look at it in a bigger, in a bigger view.
Kevin Cole with the city of Danville, been on the commission twenty years now. And interestingly enough, this is the first time that I personally have ever been again on the beginning part of the comp plan. So I'm excited about it and I'm thrilled to death that we can all work together. I think there's a, it may be earned too, but there's been some animosity between all the, the different entities, I suppose, but I think that's waned some and I'm looking forward to everybody getting behind this, coming up with, with something they can be proud of with this product.
I'm surprised Kevin's only been involved with the city of Danville twenty years. I thought he rode the city's charger, but I haven't.
My name's Stephen Dexter, I'm legal counsel and board commissioner for the city of Danville and have, let's see, I'm probably a third or fourth generation family mover in this community and have lived here my entire life and, and excited for the opportunity to serve Danville and capacity in Boil County as a whole and the guidance, help to buy and process. It, it makes me feel satisfied to be able to serve in that way.
Me?
Don Peek, I'm the city commissioner, first term. I was born and raised here, went to high school here, graduated, family here and worked for the city for thirty years, retired and then ran the commission.
Awesome.
So obviously I'm interested in everything succeeding here and bringing my kids back to town.
Good.
I'm Joe Black again, I'm the planner and hopefully at the end of that, really, you should say you mentioned Black.
Michaela.
Michaela Gary, I'm the planning director for Danville Boyle County. I just want to say how much I appreciate you all being here today.
Josh Morgan, I'm the city engineer for Danville. Most of you all know me, but I'm born and raised here, Parable elementary grad, Boil County grad, so.
Parable proud.
Yeah, always. So I, you know, I have a lot of ties to every bit of this county for a long time, you know, see, we've seen three, four generations of them, at least for me as well. So, so I'm really interested in this and, and this is a passion of mine and you all probably figured that out in this, this whole process, so I'm looking forward to going.
You graduated?
I did.
I'm Mark Morgan. Joni and I have lived here either in Forkland or Danville for forty-three years, raised our family here, run businesses here. Currently I'm chair of the city-county parks and recreation committee. I'm also chair of the Danville Boyle County Trails Alliance.
Which I would love to speak to.
Again, Paula Bodner, working on some of that, how we're going to.
I'm excited to meet you.
Jason Collin, magistrate, Fourth District. I have escaped the East Coast and came to Kentucky, been here fourteen years, been in Danville since. So love to be by your side and enjoy working with, with all of you all. One of those, it was great to be in this part of town.
Jake, John.
I'm Chris Haren, I'm the Boyle County attorney. I've only lived here for twenty years, but in my twenty years, I've seen a lot of, you know, positive changes in Boil County. Our population's increased, a lot of positive things going on in growth and I wanted to continue and, I mean, we're already on the map. People know this is a place to come, retire, but we can be even more. So I'm excited about our future.
Marshall Carrier, municipal utilities director for the city of Danville. We actually provide utilities for Parable and Junction City as well, as well as in the county, so.
It's so good to have you here, Marshall, like today. I'm really glad you're here.
Okay, great. Appreciate it.
They make the world go round.
But I've, I've, I lived here in the Danville area a while, so I had a, I worked here locally, the younger ages, and had a stint with the Kentucky Transportation Bureau for about eleven years and decided to raise a family down here, so here I am, back where I'm from.
I'm Bunny Scutfield and my husband and I moved here nineteen eighty, which was forty-three years ago, because the quality of life in this area and the schools, our children attended Danville schools, did very well and have not moved back here yet, but who knows? But anyway, I just, my husband and I are very interested in seeing the prosperity of this area, the area and the culture of this area and the beauty of this area in general. I think it can all be reported.
Thank you.
Thank you, New Year's.
Okay. This is going, over the next several months, as this process goes, it's not going to be done, this is not going to be done today, it's not going to be done next week, it's going to, it's going to be a multi, multi-month process and it needs to be delivered. Better to be right than personal. Okay? We're going to get to know each other better, okay? Breaking bread together, burger together, hopefully. We're, I, I'm, I'm really excited about this. Okay, so I'm glad that everybody got to introduce themselves and you didn't get to reintroduce yourselves again because I forget names. I'm going to go into the five questions I'm going to ask you in, in just a minute, but I did want to say something, okay? Resentment, okay? Ends, that goals and objectives only are goals and objectives and will never be fulfilled. Okay? Absent actual tasks on a calendar, given to somebody to fulfill to a standard by a particular name. Anybody want to raise the BS flag on that? Does anybody want to raise the BS flag on that? Okay? That's what the plan is. That, that's what the plan is. It's not that binder who works. Do you get it? Okay? So the strategy, so you're going to, you are all going to determine the what. You are going to determine the what. The strategy is going to be the how, okay? The actual plan, I was telling Michaela this yesterday, I said, I said, I'm, I'm, I'm not your boss, I can't make you do this, but what I expect to see in your office is a, is like a huge calendar, not with the dates like you see like among the calendar, but it goes across the, across the duration of the plan, from today to the end date with lines on it that have all of the tasks by the date that they're supposed to be achieved, okay? With the person's name on it and then what do you do? You go backwards from there, like, so here's the task and remember what I said earlier, how do I know when I see it? Okay? So that's the completion criteria. And then you're going to, it's not her job to do this, but it's her job to like ride herd on this, right? It's going to be, you, you are all the elected officials who use that to the ends. Your people that you put in charge to oversee that are going to be the ones that are riding herd that work backwards to say, in order to achieve this, okay, what are the steps that need to be done? So you go backwards on that. Does that make sense? So you're going to see like, what I expect to see is something that looks like this. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight, and then all in between. And then maybe it'll say something like, build a park. Okay, I'm making this up. Okay, so this date is right here. Okay, that's a date. Somebody's going to be assigned that, right? Backwards from that is going to be a set of milestones, okay? This is what I envisioned. So strategy is just the general ways that we're going to do this. The plan itself is not your binder. The plan is something that you can execute and that anybody in this room can look at and say, hey, where are we on this plan? Now, does anybody want to raise the BS flag? Because you can, I'm, I'm not a dictator, okay? Not even a legislator, okay? But does anybody want to raise the BS flag? Okay? That's in each of your areas, anybody can look at this thing and say, this is how we know where we're at in our progress, okay? The plan is the actual steps that, that are, need to be done to achieve the ends that we say that we want. Does that make sense? So I want you to think, just keep in your mind, you, remember, your job is not to be the doers necessarily in a small community like the county, okay? But your job is to, we can't just say, quality of life. Those are three words. How will I know when I see it? Quality of life. What does that mean? Okay? You have to determine what that means, okay? If that means bike trails, okay, taking our old rail line that goes, that goes from Springfield all the way through Junction down into East Kentucky, okay? Taking part of that and making the rails the trails. I'm not saying that's going to be it, but if that's part of it, it has to be assigned to somebody? And you can't just assign it to him. You can't be like the Germans in World War Two and say, your job is to defend this bridge. Everybody's seen Bridge of Magen, okay, that old movie where, you know, they assigned them to, to do something, but they didn't give them the, they didn't give them anybody to, to defend it with, okay? And then they ended up executing the commander because he wasn't able to fulfill the direction that he was given because he wasn't given the means to do it. Okay? So if, if you want to have real, if you want to have a park, if that's true, what should I expect to see? Right? If it's important enough for you to build a park, we should naturally expect to see some type of, you know, resources given to that and then somebody gets assigned to it, right? So our plan is going to be a binder that lays out our principles, who we are and what we want to be, but really the meat of it is going to be all those tasks, okay? Now, does anybody want, does anybody, I'm, I'm dead serious, I'm, I'm not. Does anybody want to raise the BS flag and that's what that's going to be in the end? So now we know where we're starting, we know where we're going to be. We don't know what all those tasks are. We have no idea what those tasks are going to be because we haven't even figured out yet this thing. Okay? That's just framing. That's just framing. Okay? I am not going to preach you a list of things that you ought to do, not me either. Way back when, Harvard Danville asked me to come give a talk on the barriers to entry to small business in Danville. And my hackles went up and I was like looking for that boxing glove, this, you know, like, you're all, many of you are too young, but in the old, in the old movies, you know, you is, a comic movie, you walk through a door and a boxing glove will swing down and hit you and, and you walk through. And I was like, whoa, why, why me and why now? Like I have a guy at my own community. Okay, why are you asking me that question in the barriers to entry to small business in Danville? But, so I asked them, I said, I'm not going to tell you those, but I'm going to ask you questions. So here, here's what I'm going to do, I'm going to ask you some questions, five questions. And these are open-ended, you don't have to answer me, but I really hope that you will. I, I hope that you'll all really participate in this and I'll give you some, I'll help guide the discussion. Who are you and what do you want to be? Okay? Who's, who are you, Danville, Boyle County, Junction City and Parable? And, and what do you want to be? Do you actually have it written? Do you actually have it written down in your four communities, who you are and what you want to be? So Prattville, Alabama, anybody know where Prattville is? You do?
Play golf.
Yeah, that, Robert Trent Jones.
Outstanding, RTJ.
Robert Trent Jones Golf Trail in Alabama, some of the best golf courses in all of the United States and a really nice one in Prattville, they have a Scottish links golf course there. People come from all over the country, they fly in in jets.
Torture me.
To go, to go, yeah.
Torture me.
To go play that golf. So Montgomery, Alabama is a, is a community of, I don't know, three hundred and fifty thousand people in the, in the metro area, okay? Montgomery, Mutunka, Millbrook and Prattville are, are the Montgomery metro area. Prattville decides they're going to call themselves the preferred community. And all the other communities go, the preferred community? What the hell does that mean? Okay? Prattville puts up, they spend the money at, on the three US highway entrances into town. They have big beautiful signs put up to say, welcome to Prattville, the preferred community. And they start, they deliberately undertake to make themselves the preferred community in that metro area, okay? Thirty thousand people and you're like, yeah, you're thirty thousand people, I'm five hundred thousand, what's the big deal? Prattville becomes the place where the state, when people are elected to state office or go work in the state government, they go live in Prattville. When air force colonels and majors go to the war college and the staff college for a year, they rent in Prattville and they send their kids to Prattville schools, okay? When Publix came, they came to Prattville. When Bass Pro came, they came to Prattville, okay? And then the other communities went, ooh, they are the preferred community. Crap, how do I catch up? Okay? But it started by them deciding who they were and what they wanted to be and made it so that people. it so that people desire to come there, okay? I'm not telling you, I'm asking you, do you have something, do you have a founding document that says who you are and what you want to be? I encourage you each to have that, all right? Does Dandel want to be the place for retirees? Okay, US News said it's one of the top ten places in America to retire sometime, right? So do you know what one of the top ten places to retire in America that's totally counterintuitive? Holland, Michigan. Anybody ever heard of Holland, Michigan? Okay, you'd say to yourself, who the heck wants to retire in Holland, Michigan, and you get nineteen feet of snow a year and it's really cold there? Why would retirees want to move to Holland, Michigan? Anybody been to Holland lately? Okay, what's it, what's it look like downtown?
Downtown was what Greenville, South Carolina looks like, very pedestrian friendly, lots of easy places to find something interesting to eat or to drink or to purchase, easy to talk to people. We rented e-bikes and rode thirty miles along the lake and rode back, and then we shut down. There was also a little college there.
So they have a small college like Dandel, okay? They purposely built serendipitous meeting places, and you think, but it's cold in the winter. What did they do? They heated their streets, okay, so that you can walk in the wintertime without slipping on ice, okay? They built these serendipitous little meeting spots around chimney columns where, with fires where the people, even in the wintertime, can meet each other, bump into each other as they're going in and out of shops. They decided that, they said, if we really want to be a place where people can retire to, we have to make it so that they can live here and work, so they deliberately decided to do that, okay? If we want, I'm not saying that we do want to do that because I don't determine the end to you, okay? But if we decide that we want to be that kind of a community, does that not necessarily compel us to then actually do tasks to fulfill that end, right? So who are we and what do we want to be? Since it's a joint community effort, all four governments can't just do their own part alone in this, right? So we all have to figure that out. Where are you in your communities with respect to that? Like, I'm just wondering, do we, have you, since you've become judge executive with your new fiscal report, have you sat down and talked about who you are and what you want to be yet?
Yeah.
Okay, do you think that's probably something you guys want to do?
We're trying.
Come here, think that's something you want to do? Probably want to put it right. Paul, I'm guessing, I'm, this is just a guess from observations here, but my guess is that Junction is accepting whatever growth they get instead of managing that deliberately.
I don't know, the inner words, but I would assume.
Okay, Earl, you know, did you guys?
I'm looking at a map, I'm sorry.
We have a strategic plan, John.
I didn't, I was looking at Prattville. What was the question?
Do you have a founding document of who you are and what you want to be?
We, well, the commission, yeah, different ways, yeah, it's the same thing. We, just like the strategic plan that the commission just developed, I mean, we do have a mission statement, we do have those things, not necessarily assembled in one document that says, this is our statement of that, sure, who we are.
Do you think it's important to have like a statement? I always do, I always think it's really important to have a statement that everybody can look at, so that if somebody's asked in your, like, I do this when I, when I take on a client, I go talk to their senior leaders apart from the CEO, I just, I say, I need some time with each of your senior leaders individually, and I ask them who they are and what they want to be and what they think that their corporate objectives are. And I will tell you, I am shocked that we have an economy in this country, and I mean that sincerely, because what do you think the track record is for any organization, for any two different leaders within a company to tell you the same answer? It's like serum. It's like serum. So I think it's really good for each of your organizations, each of your governments to have something that says who you are and what you want to be, and so that everybody can answer that question the same way. Okay, so that's number one. Who are you and what do you want to be? Okay? Number two, what are the bounds placed on you? Restraints, okay? A constraint is something that you have to do, a restraint is something you're not allowed to do, okay? What are the constraints and the restraints placed on you by the state, by your own local laws, by industry standards, and local culture? Okay, so what are the, what are the constraints and restraints that are placed on you by state laws, your own local laws, by industry standards, and by your local culture? So we just heard this morning that some businesses that want to come in want to be within city limits for certain reasons. Those are industry standards, okay? I have been around organizations that want to lure certain businesses, partner with other businesses, and they have no idea what those businesses require. Like, people have never heard of things like ISL nine thousand, right? Like, industry operating standards. Why you need a six-inch water line instead of a four-inch water? Okay, we want, we want, we want to bring this business in, they're going to target this business that requires a bigger line than they actually have. Does that make sense? And you go, oh, well, I don't know if we can put in a new line for you, but we want you to come here. Does that make sense? So I'm, this again, this is a general question, what are those laws that might limit what you can do? Are there state laws that limit what we can do? Like, Joe, you were just saying, KRS one hundred gives us very specific, you know, rules about what we can do, but there are. The state allows each county to have zoning or not have zoning, right? There, how many counties even have zoning in the state?
It's not all, it's been down a majority.
Is it now a majority?
I do not.
No, it's not even, it's not, I don't think it's close to a majority. I don't think it's even close to a majority of the counties in the state that have zoning, okay? So the state gives you broad leeway, okay? How hard are you going to have to work to obtain buy-in from your own voters for this plan? I think that's one of the, that's one of the real goals that we're going to have, you know, by going around and find, you know, having sessions with the voters to talk about, to talk about issues. I got appointed to planning and zoning simply because I, Julie's over here laughing right now, but I got appointed to planning and zoning because I went and asked a question at a P and Z meeting, which was essentially, I need to know when I need to move. And they're like, what are you talking about? You just got here. I said, yeah, but you changed the law on me, like, I bought my land based on a promise that you made to me on the size of development in the county. So when I bought my land, there was a minimum five-acre subdivision, that was the law here, okay? Well, then they, then they dropped it to one acre because some farmers had dawned to their local magistrates and said, hey, I just want to cut off an acre and give it to my daughter, okay? Why would you let me do that? Now, nobody foresaw the natural consequences of when they, do you think there are natural consequences from taking that, from taking that down from five acres to one acre, okay? One of those consequences is that we now have urban level density in the county outside the service boundary on sixteen-foot wide roads that can't handle that traffic, okay? And on eleven-foot wide roads that the fire trucks can't turn on.
And rock two feet down, no set of resistance.
Correct. Correct. So I asked the question, I just need to know when to move, okay? I actually asked, the question I asked was, how much is your promise worth? They didn't like that. They felt like they took umbrage at that and said, okay, well, we're going to make you P and Z country.
That would reach it.
Great. But that's, it's really important, how can you get buy-in from your constituents for the plan? Is it simple or difficult for somebody to start a business here? Okay, I'm, it's just a question, is it simple or difficult for somebody to start a business here? Are there certain kinds of businesses that you want, and are there certain kinds of businesses that you don't want? That's a really important question that has to do with your ends here, okay? That, I can, I can foresee that being a very difficult question for the five of you right here, okay? That's a, I can foresee that to be a very difficult question for you. Do you want that truck stop that can, that can pump you a lot of money, okay, into your city, but he is going to then dictate where he's going to be, and maybe nobody else wants to be near that truck stop, okay? You get to decide that, okay, not anybody else in this room. How do your bounds that you put on yourself compare to those of your competitor communities? Okay, do you even see communities as competitors? There's, there's a very interesting academic, well, it's not an academic, it's an intellectual argument between the left and right elites in this country right now, the left elites and the right elites that talk about the slippery slope, okay? And the right says, oh, you can't go down that slippery slope, everything's a slippery slope, okay? And the left says, oh, come on, there's no such thing as slippery slopes. And we know that there really are such things as slippery slopes, and we also know that not everything is a slippery slope, okay? So, you know, if, when I, what's an example of a slippery slope, right? So if somebody says, well, if we allow this, we're going to be, we're going to be just like Casey County. We don't want to be like Casey County, right? If we allow this, we're just going to be, we're going to end up being just like Cleveland, okay? Well, maybe, maybe not, but, you know, but some counties will allow certain things that you might decide you don't want, okay? Some cities might allow certain things that you just might decide that you don't want, okay? But you have, you have to decide that, and you can't not decide it, because then what's going to happen is that the growth will either happen or won't without your ability to move it, right? So what, the kind of growth that I'm seeing right now in Junction City has been because they haven't necessarily managed their growth. So they're going to accept whatever happens, just like up on Prusseman Knob in Cream Ridge, the county is, has accepted. And, you know, I'll tell you what I've told the judge and my fellow, and my magistrate says, that's now, like, you've been handed a turn-on plate, you have to do something with it, okay? It's not what you intended, but it is what you got because you didn't manage that, right? So now you can't just say, well, I didn't do that turn-on plate, but it is my turn-on plate, I have to go do something with it, okay? So what are the bounds placed on you?
Jeff, can I say something succinctly? I think you make a point that I think is critical. The best policy is always derived absent of individual consideration or people. So when you just make a flippant decision about saying, we're going to just let Farmer Joe carve off an acre for his daughter Sarah to raise her family, that's an easy thing for everybody to support, but the question that's not asked is as a community, as a county, do we support one-acre carvings off of agricultural tracts for residential use? That's the question.
That's the question.
And you don't ask that question at the time of development, you ask that question now in the development of a comp plan.
This is one, yeah.
Right, but too often in the community, in our, not, it's not unique to Dandel County, we have something that we try to accommodate, or we have a business we get excited about. So we make an exception, and the implications are there for a laundry list. And so as elected officials, you then inherit issues that you have to deal with. Those issues are different in the county than they are in the city, but the city has a handful of those. Private developments with private driveways, with private infrastructure, a developer goes to defund, who holds the bag? Is it the city? Well, the city didn't ask to hold that bag, but you have residents with certain expectations, so how do you fix it? But the problem is, proper planning with policy decisions made prior to any considerations should always guide us. So in my mind, the proper consideration is, with specific requests, if the comp plan doesn't answer it, the question is, you press pause, revisit the comp plan, make a policy decision without considering Farmer Joe and his daughter Sarah, but what does the community do? That conversation is critical, and in an ability to serve constituents, we don't have it, because people desire to serve and accomplish a goal for one individual, when we're not looking at what should rise to the top, and that's the interest of the community.
A hundred percent, I love that. No decision that any of you elected policy makers made, none, are absent downstream consequences, okay? Beyond the immediate one that you're thinking about, okay? Farmer Joe wants a one-acre carve-out for his daughter, okay? Well, we can't just give him the exception, so we're going to change the zoning, we're going to change the law. And I've had people say, it's not a law. I go, it's the law. And they go, no, it's not, it's the zoning ordinance. Really? That's the, that's the law in the county, right? So you change the law to make all Farmer Joes able to do this. Then they go, crap, I don't have the money to pay for that road, but that's a natural consequence of what you're doing, okay? Love it, thank you.
Well, I think the role of counsel in those situations is to play devil's advocate in every policy consideration.
Yeah.
To consider what is the flip side of this, what are potential negatives? And you shouldn't be afraid of making people upset by asking the questions, because the questions are intended to derive some policy decision that can be adhered to and upheld.
Good, right.
But I agree, what I agree with you saying is that we need to ask what our values are.
Oh, that's right.
Isn't carving off one acre for a family group to build a home and raise their family indicate what our values are, that it's a community we value and value?
Yes, so I love that question, so, because the way, mm, we're going to get into, can you write your question down, please? I'd like you to rewrite that question because when we, after lunch, we do the assumptions drill. I want to, I want to use that as our, maybe as our first, I want to use that maybe as our first question.
And what's important about this question, not to answer it, is that we should feel free to ask.
Not answer it.
I'm not answering, but we should be free to ask, because the only way we have a healthy conversation is about considering it and without a real Farmer Joe, when a real Farmer Joe's there, you're scared to ask the question because you don't want to tick off his family he'll go church with and shop at Walmart.
Yeah, so the question then becomes, how do you allow us to consider farmer's heritage, but also we don't really want one-acre lots, a farm development in the one-acre lots in the county? So what policy can we establish to enable those types of transactions?
I love this, because we're already, so, now, by the way, this happens in every planning session, I'm, I have a lot of experience with planning sessions, this happens in every planning session where you guys, suddenly the light bulb goes on collectively, and everybody wants to dive into a hard issue, and I love it, I absolutely love it, but I'm going to try to, come on, trigger, let's wait until after lunch.
In all honesty, you started it.
I did. All right, so we're done with, we're done with three.
Just real quick, we have to, it's very important as people that are elected by those constituents to understand and respect property rights. Somebody owns property, how far do we dictate them on what they can do with their property?
So my, my very first, my very first meeting on P and Z, somebody said, it's not our job to tell people what they can do on their property. I said, are you serious? They go, yeah, people are going to be able to do whatever the hell they want on their property. And I said, I'm not allowed to pig farm on that property, okay? Now, you tell people all the time, like, you can't put a mine on your property. Well, that's different. No, you just said we're not in the business of telling people what they can do on their property. We are, you are in the business of telling people what they can and can't do on their property. You make the laws.
Yes.
By the law.
Right.
By the law, remember, this was the last question, what are the bounds placed on you by the state? You are given legal authority by the state to make laws. Okay? You make those laws.
Yeah, so it, that's where it gets confused. The, the, it's, the constitutional authority of planning and zoning lies in not telling what somebody, what they can't do, but protecting the rights of people already there. So then, that, you don't have somebody doing something that offends everybody else around them. So that's, the whole foundation is restriction. That's, I mean, it just is.
And Jeff, but Jeff...
Protection is more of that, or is it restriction? Protection exists, not necessarily the, the person trying to do something protecting the people from harm from that person trying to do something. So a pig farm, being in the center of Perrigo, you wouldn't want that. Right? So, so planning, the whole nature of planning and zoning is to protect the environment in which development is occurring. So then, therefore, the comments of what type of development do we want are critical.
You don't wanna do that, I'm gonna jump in here. You do not wanna do that at the moment that somebody's making that request.
Correct.
You get that? You wanna do that in this master plan process. You wanna think through, this is where we're gonna go through an assumptions drill this afternoon, okay? You wanna go through this planning process so that you have a template that helps to guide you, so that you're not driven by the emotion in the minute in that request. Okay? So, when somebody wanted to put, like, I'm not making this up, last fall, when somebody wanted to have that solar thing going, the word got back, "You better be careful when you're out in your hunting stand, you do not wanna have an accident this fall." Okay? That's emotion talking. Okay? That you do not wanna be driven by that moment. Okay?
Case in point, on solar, and we've had long discussions with the fiscal court of Mercer County. They have a very limited planning and zoning issue on energy development. They have, they were the fifteenth out of several hundred to get 2,000 employees a couple of years ago. And all of a sudden, that same land is being bought up for thousands, 900 acres, on 127, when you go north on the right, 900 acres of nothing but glowing solar panels. And they probably will have one heck of a fight next month with the public service commission because they don't have adequate protections of all the subdivisions and the people around it.
What are the bounds placed on you by the state and your own laws and local culture?
Okay, I got another digger. People that know the laws that are placed on them will hit and break them anyway.
Okay? The people that know that the laws are placed on them, break them. Do you?
What do you do?
Well, you have a choice, right? Do you enforce them or do you not?
I have to enforce them. Because we had a, a, a person that was in, in, in the city, that had land that was not supposed to be growing agriculture crops on that portion of the land because he had asked a year before, and I had a contact with planning and zoning about it and because it was zoning residential, he could not grow crops on it. He did anyway. But the, the, when the planning and zoning was decided, driving the labor, telling him not to do it, he did it anyway. He didn't, so, hey, what's he gonna do? Does he run out of fire or something, or he's beat up, placed on something, and watch the consequences? Other than just say, "I'm doing this."
Right? Yeah. So, I mean, uh...
That's the point I'm getting at, is there needs to be something...
So a, a, any law is only as good as the, as its legal backing, as its consequential backing, isn't that it? Okay? So that's something we can talk about too, so you guys can, you know, if you have a city attorney, you ought to be able to deal with that. Okay? Yeah, but if you, if you don't, you can talk to Chris, and Chris can help you with that, right?
With this, if it's with planning and zoning, is it a question of city enforcement, or is it...
Planning and zoning is not an enforcement arm. We do not have, we do not have police.
We, we have some authority to take an issue to court and get injunction. It's, it can be a question of resources sometimes, what we do, no pursuit of that. And there's not been a lot of that activity in Boyle County, in my opinion.
So look at this, we've gotten through two of the five questions, and, and this is good discussion, right? I mean, so far, it's a pretty good discussion, with just two of the first five questions. Or the first two of the five questions. The third question is, what is the ground truth in your community? And how easily can prospective, prospective businesses or people that wanna move in know what the ground truth in your community is? Okay? What, what is, what is actually true on the ground? What is the, what is the truth on the ground in your community? I'll, I'll give you, I'll start out with an example of ground truth. We, we don't need to make this all about examples, but, but it's a good, it's a good example, I think, to put out. My very first week in this community, I was invited to two offices on Main Street. Invited to two offices on Main Street. And there was a story. And I was asked, "Who the hell are you, why'd you move here, what are you running for?" I didn't know these people. I did not know these people. And that's what I was asked. And I said, "I, I am totally a lawsuit." I am, like, I, I don't, I am, like, that's not the kind of question I expected to be asked. No, like, "Ah, we know who you are, we know, we know the kind of money that you gave up in DC." Nobody moves into this community unless you're gonna try to take over. This is, this is true, this is a true story. Okay? Nobody comes into this community with your, with your credentials unless you're gonna try to take over. So, "Come on, you're..." I said, "Man, I, I live outside, you know, outside of jurisdiction for a reason. I just moved here to start a small business, help small businesses." No, you're never gonna get a client in this community. Wow. Okay? I, I did not know that ground truth when we moved here. I'm not saying that we wouldn't have moved here if I knew that level hostility. Okay? I'm not saying that we wouldn't have moved here, but I certainly would have taken into account.
I need the name of those people. You're not gonna get in the squad.
You are not gonna get the name of those people. And...
Last name's Cottle.
Uh, it took me eight years before I got a client in my own community. And, um, it's, it's, it's very interesting. So that, that's it. That's it. An example of below the water in the iceberg, right? Culture, culture is the below the water in the iceberg. You see the tip of it. Okay? Everybody sees Burke's Bakery, you know, and everybody sees the Happy Main Street, but what you don't see is that underneath it. Okay? And I, I didn't, I didn't know that. So, uh...
We've all been exposed to the underneath of the earth.
What's that?
Because I think we've all been exposed to the underneath of the earth.
Yes, we have. Okay, so here's some questions about, here's some questions about ground truth. Okay? How many people live in the county? Does anybody actually know the number of people that live in this county? Do we have an accurate number?
Thirty thousand.
Yeah, so many.
It goes up and down every...
It goes up and down every...
Yeah. There's people moving there.
Thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand. I have thirty thousand and thirty-two thousand. Okay. Is 2,000 people just a rounding error at 30,000? What do you think? What's that?
It's a lot of them.
Two, 2,000 is not a rounding error on 30,000.
Depending on if the address is in session or not.
Okay? What are the demographics? Does anybody actually know what the demographics are? Does anybody really, do we even wanna talk about that? Do we wanna talk about what the demographics are in this county or not? This is a ground truth question, yes or no, in this planning process? In this, in this master plan process, do we even wanna talk about what the demographics are? Okay? Do, you know, how do we find out? How do we find out what the demographics are?
Start with the census.
Okay? Start with the census. So it's, it's not just black, white, Hispanic, it's also socioeconomic strata. Okay? Those are just as important as each other. Okay? Do we want, this is an underlying question about what the ground truth in this community is. You are going to, you are going to be forced to come up with answering questions, what do you want your demographics to be? Not just what are they today, what do you want them to be? Okay? You're gonna be asked that question during this process. What is the socioeconomic strata of this, of the four communities in this? When I say the community, I'm talking about all four communities, okay, from here on. Do we even know what the socioeconomic strata is of the four communities? Okay? How far to the right, how far to the right do the salaries of the center professors skew the median income, or the mean income in this county? Is that a fair question to ask? Is that a fair question to ask? Okay? So, do, you know, what's the median income in the county? Okay? Now, if you control for the, for the salaries of the center professors, what's, where does that move the mean? What does that mean to the county, to the community? Okay? What does that average income mean? Okay? If you want to develop downtown Perrigo, nice restaurants and shopping, okay? Or, is it only gonna be people from outside that come in to eat there? Or can people that live in the community actually do that? That's a really important question to be asked, right? Everybody wants to have a really nice downtown where people can come eat. Well, can people in your own community actually do that? So, these are the, we're talking about ground truth questions that are really, really important. What is the availability of skilled and unskilled labor in this community? Right? So we have a thousand open jobs right now? Is that correct? We have a thousand open jobs in this community? Are they unskilled or are they skilled labor? What's that?
A mix.
A mix, okay? What's, what is the available infrastructure? Can people take, can people take a bus? What makes our community different from Louisville, from Prestonspur? Okay? Or from E-Town? E-Town wasn't much bigger than our community 20 years ago. It actually wasn't. Okay? Has anybody been to E-Town for a baseball or soccer tournament in the last few years? No? So they, they built a massive complex there. They built a sports complex. The community paid for this big sports complex. The downstream consequences of that are that 52 weeks a year, that sports complex is booked out for tournaments. Guess what got built right around the sports complex to accommodate that? Hotels and restaurants. Around, so they built a Gucci soccer complex with multiple fields for tournaments and then baseball fields. So that every weekend of the year now, that thing is booked out. They charge those tournaments. They, they, they keep, the entire upkeep is solely based on tournaments. Okay? And they had to build new hotels, they didn't have to. New hotel chains came in and said, "Heck yeah, I've done that for 52 weeks a year of people coming in from out of state to do tournaments." So, this is a ground truth question. Okay? I'm not telling you to build that here. I'm saying, what makes us different? What made Prattville a preferred community? The ground truth was that they were willing to, to make laws that brought that kind of development in. Okay? Because that's, that's what their ground truth is. Okay? I asked this question several years ago, and, and I got, man, I got a really, really, really angry phone call from a particular vice president, thank you. I said, "Why is the hub building pretending to be for sale?" You guys remember when it was for sale for a really long time?
I did.
Of course you did. But that building wasn't actually for sale. Oh, man, I got a really, really angry phone call from a particular vice president. He said, "You make me look bad." I said, "I did not, I did not mention your name, I didn't, you have nothing to do with this." I just asked, "Why is the bank pretending to have a building on for sale when it's not really for sale?" He goes, "It is for sale." I said, "If it was for sale, then the person who offered asking price for it would have actually had it sold." Okay? That's not true, that never happened. So the person that offered asking price, upon hearing that I was challenged, sent that particular VP the email trail with his request to the bank to buy the building for asking price and him being denied by the bank. Now, I'm not making this about the bank, do you understand this? I'm not making this about the bank. What I'm saying is, what? There is a different ground truth. Does that make sense? The ground truth was that it wasn't actually for sale. What is the ground truth? There's an underlying ground truth everywhere, somewhere. And we can't really move forward with the plan and setting of policy or ends until we acknowledge what the ground truths are. Okay? Do you have some ground truths in Perrigo that are like that? Do, are there ground truths in Junction that are like that, right? Are there ground truths in Danville that are really, really like that? Okay? That are going to, like, because there might be a ground truth that's gonna inhibit, somebody might know a ground truth that, that they're just holding on to, that might really inhibit a desire to think. Any, any, anybody wanna bring up a ground truth around here that's like a difficult ground truth?
Sewer tax imperative.
Sewer tax imperative?
A constituent of five people of 800 square feet, and they can't pay because of the sewer tax. It's a hundred points for you.
There's a, there's a commercial electric generating company that wants to pay our farmers in a certain part of the county, a certain number of dollars a year per acre. Okay? Um, to allow them to build solar panels on their, on their farms. Okay? That's more money than those farmers make farming per year. That's a ground truth that's going to impact our magistrates, you know, because they're gonna say, "Hey, I, I wanna make that money, I don't wanna call it a solar farm." Okay? A ground truth is what we call things. Okay? Is it a farm? Is that agriculture? You know? A certain constituent at a certain meeting said, "Well, I like the idea, that's a beautiful picture. We should run sheep under the solar farms, or under the panels." I go, "Is there a farmer in eastern, in the eastern part of the county today that's running sheep? Is there a single farmer in the eastern part of the county today that's running sheep? Can you make them do that?" Those are ground truth-type questions, and we should acknowledge those. Okay? How are we doing? You guys aren't, not sat in your world to live yet? Okay? Fourth question, what are the pathologies in our community? Every organization, every single organization has two different kinds of pathology, sociological and bureaucratic. Okay? Two different kinds of pathologies, sociological and bureaucratic pathologies. Sociological, you cannot make people homogenous. You have to deal with heterogeneity, meaning differences in people. Okay? So, we have differences in socioeconomic strata, we have differences at educational levels, we have differences in cultural backgrounds. My family, I'm, I'm Serbian, I was born in Serbia in a peasant family. My children are first... My children are first generation parents. Okay? I feel at home on the Knob because it looks like my village in Serbia. Okay? I am actually working aggressively, those of you that know me well, know that I'm working aggressively to make my community on the Knob like our village in Serbia. You know, we get together and we have potlucks and we help each other out. People have each other's keys. Okay? Those, those are sociological differences between, so. When, when we did not live, when we, when we lived in Prattville, Alabama, and Washington DC and Dayton, people said, where are you from? I said, Danville, Kentucky. But as soon as we moved here, where did I say I was from? To, what's that? Persimmon Knob or Wall County, right? Why would I tell people I'm from Wall County and not Danville? Because in this state, what is a sociological difference between city and county? Right? I've got a buddy that for years told me he was from Glasgow. But the minute I moved here, he started saying Barron County. And I said, I thought you were from Glasgow. He goes, brother Rube, we talked about that before you moved to Danville. I said, I'm not from Danville. He goes, for the same reason I'm not from Glasgow, I'm a Barron County man. Okay? But we all know that, right? We know the differences here. Those are, those are sociological pathologies. Okay? Democratic, Republican, wealthy and poor, Pizza Hut, Papa John's. Okay? Pizza Pub. Those are sociological pathologies in this county. And I think that they're really strong. And I think that we can overcome them in this country. Does anybody think that they're not strong sociological pathologies in this county? I think they're really strong. Bureaucratic pathologies. So we have sociological, we have bureaucratic. What's probably the biggest bureaucratic pathology in our community? Probably like city, county? You've been on both ends, Jamie, what do you think?
I think so, but also I think it's not as, it's not there as much as people like to think it is. One of those things where I could say the difference between perception and reality is you can change reality. So I think that, you know, that perception that there's this rift between city and county is oftentimes greater than it really is.
So that's, if that perception remains, maybe part of this planning process can be to break that down. I, I would love to see that broken down as part of this planning process. What about little feed comes around here? I mean, there are people who control certain things around here. When, when I was building my house, I wanted to separate out my septic from gray water. And the person that was in charge of that at that time told me I wasn't allowed to. Okay? So I called the state and the state says, oh, heck yeah, not only are you allowed to, we're encouraging that. So I called the guy back and I said, I wanted, Josh knows this, we talked about this. I wanted to, I want to do this. And he says, I will not allow you to do that unless the state gives me a letter that tells me that I have to. What did I do? So I got a letter from the state. He says, if you hand this to me, I am going to come inspect you every week. Just, I'm not making this up. I said, why are you doing this? He says, you, you're not from here. You're new here and this is my people. Okay? You know? Somebody in his office called me up, back door and said, uh, can you like set everything up under your house so that you can turn this on after you retire, since that's not going to be too long? And, and my builder said, no, not today. So that's a, that's a bureaucratic pathology there. Okay? That is a bureaucratic pathology that made it difficult for me to do something that'd be very good for our land. Okay? What are the other pathologies in this community that we might need to deal with? Anyone? Does everybody just want to go to one for a quick bit? Jason, what, what are some of the pathologies in this community that we might need? What's that?
Nope.
No? Because you know when you're thinking about them. Okay? Okay, last question. How do you know if you're winning? How do you know if you're winning? Measuring performance gives us a false sense of accomplishment. Okay? Measuring performance, okay, gives us a false sense of accomplishment. How many potlows you've filled. Okay? Is, I think is a false sense of accomplishment. Measuring effects is the only way to know if you're actually getting towards your desired ends. You have to measure things that directly relate to your objectives. Are you attaining your objectives? Okay? Ask yourselves, if you're the leadership, if you're the leadership, not the policy setting people, but if you're in the leadership, if you're Josh, if you're Earl, okay? And, and that's going to be you too, Mr. Mayor, because you're not just going to be in a policy setting, you're in the leadership now too. Is what you're measuring going to necessarily and deliberately lead your community to the attainment of that desired end? Okay? Like, how many, how many tons of salt do we order? Right? Every community's got to order a certain ton, number of tons of salt for the coming winter. Okay? If, if you tell us, hey, we're doing great, we ordered this number of tons of salt, I'm going to ask you, did that necessarily, like, I'm not telling you that's not important. We have to do that. But is that something that you're going to tell the community got you to the actual objective or the end state in your plan? Okay? That's just a maintenance thing. Okay? Like, how many potlows you filled is a maintenance thing? Is, did you, did you actually get that new road in that relieved traffic from this other place that made, you know, gave people access? That leads to an end. Does that make sense? So what you measure is really, really important. The number of new manufacturing jobs, okay, is really important vice hires that just replace, you know, so this is a really interesting thing. The president a couple of weeks ago talked about how many jobs have been created. What he didn't say was that a lot of those jobs were second and third jobs that people took on. Okay? It, it's really important, like, you know? So measuring effects is really important. Increase in collection of taxes from increased festival attendance, okay? Um, the number of occupied dwellings on Main Street. Okay? That's going to tell you whether or not you actually have a walkable downtown. Okay? Do people actually move in downtown? Okay? So, what are the five questions? Who are you and what do you want to be? What are the bounds placed on you by state, local law, industry standards and your culture? What's the ground truth in your community? What are the pathologies of our community? And how do you know if you're winning? Okay? And I encourage each of the four governments in the community to just talk about that amongst yourselves. All right? So, everybody's had their will to live, sat a little bit now. I'm sorry that I contributed to that. Why don't we break? Go potty and then have lunch. Okay? Lunches are here. And sit and talk with each other and mingle with each other, please. All right? And we'll gather after lunch to talk about assumptions. My job is not to sap people's will to live. You can get up and go to the bathroom if you want to. You can go home if you want to. Um, I think this is really, really important. I got, I got asked some good questions that during the lunch break about where we came up with those five questions. Um, in two thousand and six, I helped write a book called Hope is Not a Plan, uh, The War in Iraq and Inside the Green Zone. Okay? And I, I was sent over there with a group of people in two thousand and four to write a progress review of the campaign plan into the war. And those questions that I asked you were derived from lessons that I, that I saw and, and wrote about in that book. So like the very first question, who are you and what do you want to be? That was derived because our country went to war without a signed plan. They signed the plan eighteen months into the war. Like, that ought to piss everybody off. I don't care what part it is. That ought to piss everybody off. Okay? Because we didn't have an objective that we were actually driving towards. Okay? And then when that objective was written, it was magic pixie dust. That ought to piss everybody off. Okay? And, and the reason we're going to do this little drill today is because part of the strategic plan listed strategic objectives. Okay? Or sorry, strategic assumptions. These are the strategic assumptions. They list ten of them. Seven of those ten are magic pixie dust. Okay? And I'll tell you, there is no such thing as magic pixie dust. So what I've learned over time is I say three things about assumptions. It's stunning how many people start a business without assumptions. Without going through their assumptions. How many people go on vacation with deeply held assumptions that they don't realize that they're assuming? So I say that you need to exhaustively list your assumptions. And you need to aggressively challenge your assumptions. And then you need to empirically validate your assumptions. Everybody here knows who Parla Par is? Okay? I love her. I really do. She's, she's, I think she's a great woman and a good administrator. I mean, just really, really good. When we were doing these Salvation Army strategic plan, she said, how come we need three days to do assumptions? I mean, if we can't knock this out in half a day, we shouldn't work. And I said, that's awesome. Let's do it. Okay, let's knock it out. At the end of the first day, she goes, there's no way. How are we going to get this done? Okay? And the reason for that is that there are a bunch of latent assumptions that start coming out once you start writing them down and people don't realize that they actually have them. And, and, you know, maybe it's not best right now to even like give more examples of that, but just believe me, we will find out about our latent inherent assumptions that we don't even realize that we're making every day. You know? There'll be a gas ditch a bit. Okay? I, you know, I taught my daughter how to, taught my daughter how to change a flat tire. And then she had a flat tire and in the car, the actual tool to turn the jack wasn't in there. Okay? There was an inherent assumption that I had not challenged, right? That that thing was actually in the car. We make those all the time. That's the kind of things I'm, I'm talking about. All right? So, who, like, I swear to you, there's, I'm just going to ask a question. Who has an assumption about the community? Okay? That we make, that we have to make before we start the planning process? What's an assumption of the community? What, what is an assumption?
Send work ethic growth.
Oh, okay.
That's send work ethic.
Okay? Now, we're not going to, okay, hang on. We're not going to get into challenging and validating this, okay? I'm just going to start writing down assumptions. Okay? We will break. Somebody throw one up. Come on, Amy.
The state will approve our plan.
Does the state have to approve our plan?
The regional organization has to.
What's that?
The ad has to review.
The ad has to approve the plan?
They're trying.
Okay?
amend that then.
Okay? Um. Oh, sorry. Okay, next?
I guess we assume that the growth will be better for our farm.
Growth will be better? Love that, Mr. Mayor. Growth will be. Good.
The city will have housing for our workers.
Okay? Everybody ought to see a real issue just with this right here. Right?
The infrastructure that goes around.
What's that?
The infrastructure, we're going to assume we're going to be able to provide water and electric. And we assume that that's just going to take care of itself.
What will take care of itself? Okay, so.
The utilities and the infrastructure, roads and, we assume that's all going to just take care of itself. Agreed.
Yeah, I'm not going to keep you all here all day long, okay? Because at some point, everybody's going to understand what this game is. Okay? And it's not a game. Okay? The game is in figuring out that this isn't not a game. Okay? Let's keep going. More assumptions.
Alternative energy is a plus.
Ms. Holland?
I would assume there'll be a workforce.
Yes.
Assume there'll be transportation for the workforce.
Okay, there is adequate. I'll just leave that underneath the structure, but that, that needs to be broken out. Folks, it doesn't have to be just the elected people in here. What else? What else are our assumptions? This, this is all the assumptions that we have going into the strategic plan?
Say the government will work together.
Okay, next?
Sometimes we take for granted and assume existing businesses or industry will continue to be here.
You are the queen of underlying assumptions. Unstated that everybody just expects to continue forever. Josh?
Yes, sir. I don't know, I was looking at this a little differently, like, and I would challenge you all to like, things that we hear from the community that they, that they think are want. Like, let's just throw them up there and, and challenge them. And then I was talking about, you know, and then when we go out to the public, we could actually, actually ask them, is this really what you all want? So like, for me, like, they give from, yeah, I'm going to put one up there that's like an assumption that I make. People want to be able to walk places. Isn't it an assumption that I make? But that, I feel like that needs to be, needs to be tested.
Keep talking, I can't hear you. Keep talking, I can't hear you.
I'll take a couple more.
You guys hear from the public a lot, right? Are their assumptions valid? They're voting constituents, but are their assumptions actually valid? When your voting constituent tells you something and it's not true?
Their perceptions are.
Do you know it's not true?
The loudest voice may not always be right.
Sweetie will, he's a pretty straight guy.
So you assume there's going to be understanding. Okay?
Knowledge.
So, knowledge and understanding. Assume, um, you're assuming goodwill and common understanding. Will an animal composting location actually stink the high air?
I can answer a bunch of, uh, panel in holy yes, but they weren't in my vision, so...
Right. So I know you and I may have actually different opinions on this, right?
Yes, that's right.
My neighbors, my neighbors a mile and a half away from this place, were saying, "Hey, we need you on board like bad to stop this thing from happening." I'm like, "Okay, why?" "It's going to stink really bad at our house." And I said, "Why do you think that?" They go, "Well, dead cows stink really, really bad." I said, "Hey, I believe you that dead cows stink really, really bad, but do dead cows that are buried under dirt stink really, really bad?"
But do they stink out of the way to be embarrassed and while they sit there to be covered?
Okay?
You had to go there.
So what did we just uncover? This is really, really, this is why we're doing the assumptions. What did we just uncover? What's that?
Assumption.
Correct. No, no, not an opinion.
Everybody has different assumptions.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not everybody has different assumptions. It's that composting an animal isn't a single, it's not a single act. Does that make sense? It is a process of steps, right? And your point was that you uncovered that there are multiple assumptions. My, I want, I want everybody to write, I'm going to write this down over here. So you don't, I'm not going to make you do this. This is the appropriate time for these two, two concepts right here. These are not tasks. These are intellectual concepts that we have to think about in terms of doing the master plan. Planning policy and the illusion of explanatory depth. Those words sound big, but they're really important, okay?
So when I plan on having a bike park, the first thing that I do is look at all the negatives. I've got to see all the negatives where everybody's selling. But I know what I want to, I want to make sure I want to do it in the first place, not me as, but me as accountant. Uh, I want to make sure it's not going to take so many, you know, I want to look into all the possible negatives thanks to for your starting plan. So that's something we do with this.
This is what you do. So, the planning fallacy and the illusion of explanatory depth are concepts that are studied by psychologists, organizational, organizational behavior, okay? For all organizations from families to businesses to community governments to national governments, okay? And the planning fallacy says it takes you longer to do what you think you're going to do than you think it's going to take. Okay? And the reason for that is because people don't think about each individual step and the time that it takes. So my son, who's now married and about to have his own kid, would say, "Dad, you keep telling me to get ready early. It only takes me like three minutes to get ready." And I say, "What are all the steps that you need to take between now and we leave?" Okay? And when he, when he names all of the steps and when I ask him how many seconds each of those things takes, what do you think it adds up to? Like, three minutes or a lot more than three minutes? A lot more than three minutes, okay? And then I say to him, "Now, do you, are those, do you instantly stop from one to the other? Or are there necessarily like four steps that have to be taken? Like four physical steps to work on a workbench?" Okay? Like, what is the time that it takes you to do all those things? The planning fallacy, and this is where, this is where these people are going to make, burn their teeth. Okay? That a good strategist earns his keep is by diving down into all the little steps that it takes. Okay? So, animal composting, cows composting in the ground, I think, are not going to smell. Okay? Okay? They're just not going to smell. A dead cow being brought on a trailer to the facility is going to smell until what? Until it's, until it's in the ground and covered. Right? Does that make sense? So people that say it's going to stink the high heaven are correct for a certain period of time. Right? So that's, that's the planning policy. And the illusion of explanatory depth, we all fall for this. The illusion of explanatory depth is everybody thinks that they can explain something. And one of my sayings is nobody knows. Okay? So if everybody can tell you, like, if I was, who here, how's, does everybody know how a toilet works, a flush toilet? Raise your hand. Everybody knows how a flush toilet works, okay? Could you come up and draw it out and how it works? My son's an engineer. Okay? He goes, "Yeah, you push panel down and it flushes." I go, "That's amazingly simple. Like, that's awesome. How?" He goes, "Yeah, you push down and it opens, the flap and the water comes out." I said, "Why does water stay in the bowl and not all go out?" He goes, "Because the flap closes." I said, "The flap is above the water." "Oh, I don't know." That's the illusion of explanatory depth. Okay? There's a lot more to every process, every process, than people know. Okay? Like, so I'm paneling the ceiling in my, in my house. Okay? Well, that's easy. Cut wood, panel the ceiling, right? No. Okay? So I spent, last year I had that sawmill, right? So for a whole year, I cut wood. Okay? And you're like, they're like, everybody's going, "Dude, you're cutting way more wood than you need." "That's a lot of wood. I need 700 square feet of wood." Okay? That's a lot more than you think. Okay? And the sawmill cuts straight, right? It cuts straight? But when you put two boards next to each other that will cut straight, they don't fit next to each other. Right? So I have more steps in there that I have to do. Okay? That's the illusion of explanatory depth. Okay? And the planning policy. So I wrote those down because we, we just talked about one thing that the, that our community is considering that has way more steps to it. You guys get that? So that's one little issue. That's, that is one little, do I want to compost animals? That's just, that's not even going to make it into our master plan. That's just not. Okay? But if that one little issue is that hard, it's not, it's, it's not difficult, but it is hard. Does that make sense? There are a lot of things that are simple, but not easy. Do you understand the difference? They're simple, but they're not easy. Okay? Compost the animals takes a lot of steps. And we don't, we have to figure out what they all are. Our inherent assumptions are that it is, that it is a thing. It is an un-unitary act. It is not. Okay? It is made up of a bunch of steps. And then somebody has to do those things. Right? And Dan, that works at the dump, is not going to actually be the guy that drives the backhoe or whatever to dig the hole and to fill it up, right? Somebody else is going to have to do that, right? Any other assumptions that we want right now?
I made an assumption about the first assumption. And when she said, "Bro, I think the economic development is..."
Yeah, so, I love this. There is an assumption that we all are thinking the same thing about this work. Do you, is that true or not? So when we write this assumption down, what are we all assuming? That we all have the same definition of what that even is. Okay? Can you see why this can become a three-day drill in and of itself? Just the assumptions drill? We're not coming close to exhaustively listing our assumptions, right? We're not even, we haven't started to challenge any of these yet. Nobody is actually throwing a BS flag at any one of these. Okay? We, before we can do that, we have to exhaustively list them. And then we have to ask, "Well, what does that, what does that mean? What does growth mean? What's this mean? What's adequate meaning? What does adequate housing mean?" I've got a nephew that's visiting us. He's been here for a few days. He's twenty-two, twenty-one, maybe. He's married, lives in Idaho, works for FedEx. And he tells me that he wants, he tells me there's a particular community. I've never heard of this town. It's 30,000 people. It's on the south end of Puget Sound, the Seattle area. Okay? And he wants to live in a home there. And I do not, I do not make any judgments to him. So I just say, "Okay, great. What does it take for you to live there?" He goes, "Well, I need to make a little money." I said, "Let's find out. Let's look up. What's the median income in that? What's the median income in that community?" He looks it up. I said, "What do you make now?" He goes, "Uh, $20." I said, "What did that people last year?" He goes, "Uh, over $12,000." I said, "Okay, what do we need to do? What do we need to do to get you into a position so that you can make the median income in that county?" Okay? That's what, that's how you get through the planning fallacy and the illusion of explanatory depth. So what do we need to do to get you to that? And he says, "Well, maybe I, I think if I'm a site manager, if I'm a site manager, then I can do that. So what do I do? What did I ask you?"
How do you get certified?
Okay, so that's, that's great. How do you, what do you need to do to become a site manager? Okay? And then I ask him, "Google the median income for FedEx site managers." So he does. What do you think it is? $50K. Okay? I said, "So, when you become a site manager, are you going to be able to do that?" He goes, "No, not even close." So then I ask him, "Why do you need that big house?" "Well, I want a, I want a nice house for my, what, kid." "Kid, great." "What does that look like? How will we know when we see it?" In nineteen, does anybody here know what the median home size was in 1960 for wealthy people in this country? 1,307 square feet, four bedrooms, one bath. What we think today is adequate is very different from what even wealthy people thought was adequate back in the 60s. Would you rather be lower middle class today or the Vanderbilts in 1800? They had servants, right? But they pooped in pots. Okay? Didn't have running water. Okay? So it's just that these, so we need to define what adequate means in a plan. If you write that you want to achieve as your objectives and your ends, that we want to achieve adequate, if you write, "We want to achieve adequate housing." And if, if I can't say to you, "How will I know when I see it?" Then I can 100% guarantee you, you will not achieve that because if you can't achieve something that's not defined, like, how will, how will I know when we get there? Remember when I asked, "How do you know if you're winning? What do you measure? How do you measure adequate?" So you collectively are going to have to figure that out. Okay? How will we know if there's, like, who's responsible for that infrastructure in this room? Who's responsible, not for building that infrastructure, but for giving them the money for that infrastructure? Raise your hands. If you're elected, raise your hands. Okay? So you can't say there'll be infrastructure if you expect Tinkerbell to come in and sprinkle magic pixie dust. Okay? Green energy is good. I was just reading this very, very interesting column by Ezra Klein in the New York Times yesterday where he was, he was saying, okay, the largest solar facility currently online in the United States is capable of generating 585 megawatts. Okay? To meet a middle road renewable energy scenario, the middle of the road in this country, they need to bring online two 400-megawatt solar power facilities, each taking up 2,000 acres every week for the next 30 years. Okay? That's the middle of the road green energy scenario. Transmission lines. The maximum transmission line infrastructure installed in one year in this country was 4,100 miles in 2010. That needs to double every year for the foreseeable future. Okay? So that's, that's the illusion of explanatory depth. Okay? So when people say, "We need, we need green energy," that's what that, what does that look like here? And we can't, "I'm not comfortable talking about that. Somebody might not like me." That's not being responsible. Okay? Um, public assumptions are valid. That's just awesome. Josh, what were you saying to me earlier at lunch?
I can't remember which part.
Go ahead. What did I tell you to write down?
Thought I said all this we talked about at lunch. Like, like, it's gonna, I think for this, for this exercise to be valuable for us, we're going to have to, we may have to say things that makes other people laugh.
Yeah, that's what I wanted you to write.
And like, really put everything out there, all the assumptions out, because like, there's assumptions we make every day. Like, one that comes to mind for me that I think a lot about is, "Damples will tax us too high." That's an assumption that I hear a lot. And that's kind of something we don't really want to talk about, but it's part of what goes into development in the community. And I think, I don't know, I've thrown that out there because I feel like there's a lot of things like that that we, you know, like I said, we don't talk about here as far as density. Uh, you know, where, where we're okay with density, where we're not. How we, how we do commercial and residential development together. There's, there's a lot of things that we make assumptions about how the community should grow or not grow. Um, where, you know, where it should grow and where it should not grow that we need to talk about.
Josh, I, I really appreciate you for saying that. And I urge Josh to write that down and say that, you know, when we were talking at lunch because if we don't talk about difficult things in the process, remember what I said the plan was? It's actual tasks by a certain time assigned to somebody to do by, at a standard. If we don't talk about what we just, what Josh just said, we actually won't put those tasks on there. Okay? If we can't talk about what our assumptions are... If we can't talk about what our assumptions are that are difficult, then, you know, then all of your public meetings are performative and not actually productive. Thank you. They're performative and not productive. Thank you for helping me with that work. Okay? And, and I think if it's just performative, I, I don't want any part of that. Okay? And I don't think you should, so now I'm not going to make a value judgment, okay? And tell you, I think that if you don't do what Josh just said and handle the difficult things. So if you guys at some level in the city don't talk about city school tax, okay? Then you cannot, you cannot talk about growth and density, okay? You can't talk about growth and density without talking about that, okay? And if you say it's uncomfortable and I don't want to talk about it, that's great. Then your master plan is not going to be, it's just going to be another thing that sits on the shelf and nobody's going to read.
Don't we say people aren't moving into junction apparel because they have high water rates? And that's never going to change. Is that an assumption? Or is that something we talk about?
Yeah, that's something that you talk about. But you say that people aren't going to move there because high water rates, okay? Okay, whatever, so, Rick, whatever the rate is, the high, the rate that is high is keeping people out there, okay? Why? Okay? So you can make that assumption that it's never going to change, okay? So exhaustively list your assumptions. That rate will never change. I am going to aggressively challenge that assumption, okay? Who makes that decision that is never going to change? Okay? Is there a will to change it? Is there a way to change it? The reason that we exhausted the list and the reason that we aggressively challenge is to cover those hard issues that people in the past don't want to talk about. That's not my sticky booger. Flick it on somebody else, okay? But I will tell you that whatever the turd on the plate is that you've been handed, you've been elected. You, nobody made you run for office. Nobody made you run for office, okay? Accept, accept that, okay? And clean the turd off the plate. Talk to each other. And you do that by exhaustively listing your assumptions, aggressively challenging them, and then going out empirically validating them, okay? And when I say empirically validating them, it's not by saying, "Well, everybody knows," okay? How do we know what the population is? You got to start with something. I'd start with a census bureau, right? Okay? Let's all agree to just use what the federal and state governments give us as the numbers, okay? Empirically validate your assumptions. Okay? If, if, if somebody tells you, "Well, it's going to stink," you go, "Well, let's go out and," you know, if, how do you empirically validate assumptions on animal composting? You go out and look to see where it's done and figure out how it's going, okay? It has to be done somewhere, right? Right? You visited somewhere, okay? So, so you've actually, you've gone out there, so people, so people, I think that would be a good person to listen to. So if this actually.
Disprove the assumption.
What's that?
If disprove the assumption when we visited. Phil, Sam, and I went to Frankfurt, and it smelled. He wrote in the fifty-eight-page document from the University of Kentucky, a PhD who wrote it, said it wouldn't smell. We stood up there with him, and it smelled.
Okay? So, so now your, your, your elected representatives can then, you've empirically, you know, you have empirical evidence on that assumption, okay? That's how, that's how plans are done that are successful. Successful plans, okay, are the ones that work that planning fallacy, the illusion of explanatory debt, and, you know, the assumptions drill. Any other assumptions that we want to talk about, that we want to put on the table that are going to be hard in this plan? Because today is a great day. You know? My expectation is that all four of the governments will go back and go through this on your own with an assumptions drill.
Senator Collins and Ephraim Galden won the community.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain, okay? So there's an assumption that Senator and Ephraim are the man behind the curtain, okay? Is there another man behind the curtain somewhere that we might? I'll bet you there's at least one other man behind the curtain somewhere. At least one.
It's the Warriors' education run, probably.
I don't care. Okay? So, and so what if, what, let's talk about what that point is. What's that point there, Jamie? That Ephraim and Senator run the community. Like, do they, does Ephraim and Senator have a veto on fiscal court? Do Ephraim and, does Ephraim, you said yes? Does Ephraim have a, and Senator have a veto on the city commission?
I didn't say yes.
No, no, no. Do they have a veto on the city commission?
They don't have a vote, do they?
They don't even have a vote?
I just say, I'm not, I think that's a community assumption.
That's a community assumption?
Yeah.
Okay? Is that an important assumption breaking the master plan? I'm asking a question. I'm not, I don't know if you're going to change those people's views even if they're written on paper. Okay? What did he say? He's saying it's not, he's not sure that you can change people's views even if it's written down on paper that they don't get a veto. Okay? But the way that you change those views is by, you know, doing what you're going to do, listening to their input, and then doing what's right, whether or not it's what they want you to do, okay? Inherent in the assumption that you just gave me, Jamie, inherent in that assumption is that what they want is contrary to what you guys want.
What inherent in that assumption too is, is that what is good for Senator is bad for everybody else.
Yeah, that's, that's my point. That's exactly my point. Inherent in the assumption that you just made is that they want opposite of what you guys want.
Yep.
Okay? And I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's a valid assumption. Why the heck would they stay here? You know? Why would they stay here? Or why wouldn't, why wouldn't they use that inherent influence to notch you guys out and put their own people in? Okay? If that was the case, right? These, these are really, man, this is what I love about the planning process. These are steps that nobody does in business plans. Like, people that do business plans, they never do this stuff, okay? Do you guys remember Pescar? Do you remember that restaurant in town? The Serbian restaurant? Okay? Early on, they couldn't, nobody went in there, and it didn't have a really good menu. They asked me to come in and help them. And I said, "Well, who are you and what do you want to be?" And his response to me was, "Well, we're not Applebee's." And I go, "Well, you're, you are one hundred percent Applebee's." And he goes, like this. And I said, "You've got a sixteen-page menu, man." He goes, "Oh, okay, we're Applebee's." I said, "What are you?" And he goes, "Well, we're a Balkan restaurant." I said, "How come the hell you got no Balkan meals on here?" He goes, "Hey, people around here don't know who it is." Okay? So, I don't know if you guys remember, but they shut down for two weeks. They redid their entire menu, and they opened up with, they reopened with a one-page, you know, two, opened up two-page menu, and it was good Balkan food. And for a month, you couldn't get a table in there, okay? Veronica was staying in there on Friday nights, okay? It was, I mean, they were, they were packed. He's like, "This is great, this is great." Like, like simplified the menu because his, all of his assumptions were wrong, okay? And then one of his assumptions was, you know, like, one day they go, "Nope, no health, no, no Balkan salad today because the truck didn't come with our, with our feta." I go, "It's your signature salad. You ran out of feta?" He goes, "Well, my assumption was that the truck would bring it today, but the truck didn't come today." See, there's an assumption. The truck is always going to be there, right? I go, "Walmart, Kroger, all be, buy your feta." He goes, "No, man, I sold all my product. That's a good thing." I go, "No, no, no, you can't run out. You're a restaurant, you can't run out." He goes, "Yeah, I sold my product. That's good." I go, "They're never going to come back." Okay? And he went from couldn't get anybody in the door to you couldn't get a seat to he closed two months later. Okay? Because he didn't do any assumptions. Okay? You guys got to do that. This is, this is where you're going to earn your keep. You all ran for office, okay? You're all in this to do the right thing. You really are, okay? You're not in this for money, Jason. So if you guys aren't in this for the money, you're in this for the right thing. But if you're going to do it, then do it, okay? Exhaustively list your assumptions, aggressively validate your assumptions, okay? Empirically validate your assumptions. Only then can you start putting tasks on a calendar. Only then can you start assigning tasks to people to accomplish. Any other discussion about this? Yes, sir? Please.
A couple of questions. So just to come off the mind that they've mentioned. So challenging assumptions, an assumption would be that we're going to be in the sewer business and it's going to be cost-effective. Maybe we don't need to be in sewer business in our city, our little city. Or if it's a high school problem, maybe, maybe we don't need to be in the high school business or in the city businesses. Is there a better alternative that we can plan for in the future? Or is KSD going to be here in two years? And what does all that open land look like in the center of the city?
Sure. So those are.
Challenge those assumptions.
So those are policy decisions. So there's a, there's a very interesting, all of life, all of life, all of business, family life, all the decisions that you make, like, you're, nothing is black and white in the, like, in the political realm, right? All of life is, is a Venn diagram, okay? All of life is a Venn diagram. Your, your assumptions have, some of your assumptions have to do with policy, okay? It is a policy decision about whether or not you're going to put, you're going to be in the sewer business, okay? That, you are not required by law to be in the sewer business, okay? It is a policy decision to do that. It is a policy decision to go from five acres to one acre subdivision in the ag zone, okay? That is, that is not an assumption, that is a policy decision. That policy decision was informed by bad assumption, okay? Bad assumptions. The assumption when you guys, you, none of you did this, okay? But it's your turd on a plate. Your predecessors allowed subdivision in the ag zone from five acres to one acre on the assumption that the one farmer that wanted to do that, to give his land to his daughter, was going to be the only one. Good assumption or bad? Okay? So now what do we have in the ag zone? We have urban-level density outside the urban service boundary, okay? It's a, that's a policy decision that has downstream consequences that they now have to deal with. And none of them are, none of them are good, okay? So the assumptions overlap with policy. Another one. You had another one, sir?
No, that was it.
That was it?
Just to challenge the assumptions, I have a policy decision.
I love it. I love it. That's why you do this. Any others? Any others that you guys concede? Assumptions that you guys have or, you know? You got to, you got to consider this because like, if they want to build that big truck stop in town, there are, there are a raft of assumptions that come underneath that, okay? That you are going to be dealing with consequences necessarily, whether or not you want to acknowledge those assumptions. You will deal with consequences. Jason, am I missing anything else? Anybody? Josh, did I miss anything? Mr. Black, did I miss anything?
I think we can warn that we're missing at the end of this process, we're going to answer every problem.
The, he said that there's an assumption that at the end of this process, we're going to have the answer to every problem. Okay? So what, what are we going to set out to answer in this entire thing? We're going to set out to achieve the ends that you write on paper that we're going to try to achieve, okay? I made this, I made this caution very, very strongly. A phrase that I really am careful about is low-hanging fruit. Oh, we got to go after this, low-hanging fruit. Does that necessarily and deliberately lead you to the attainment of the ends that you wrote at the beginning of the master plan? So the national security strategy of the United States starts with a sentence that said, "It is the policy of the United States, too." Okay? Why? Because strategy cannot exist absent policy, okay? So the first sentence of the national security strategy is, "It is the policy of the United States, too." Okay? If you guys go after low-hanging fruit that's not written as ends here, you're wasting resources, okay? And taking time and resources away from other ones that do lead to this. There's going to be a lot of private BS flags in there. Uh, we can do this, that's easy, okay? Think about it. Think about those things ahead of time, write them down. So, yeah, you're not going to, you're not going to solve every, you're not going to solve every problem. You only should try to solve what? The only thing you should try to solve is what? What you wrote down, right? That's the only thing you ought to try to solve in this plan, okay? To achieve this, what are the things that we need to do, okay? Who's going to be assigned to them, to be done at what time, to what standard? Does that work? Does it smell bad? Okay?
Hey, they're going to try egg, by the way, now in Lincoln County. They're all going to Lincoln County, so we're all good.
All the, all the, they're down there.
All right. That's good. I like letting you guys have some of your time back, okay? I would like it if you talked to each other about this. I would like it even more if you all set the times for yourselves to do this, okay? Because the next time you meet, Joe's going to be running this, and I think the expectation will be that you've done these things, okay? The expectation, by the time that you guys meet in August, is that right, August? Is that you are going to have this and that you are going to have this, who you are and what you want to be, okay? You got to come to the table with that in August. You got to come to the table with who are you and what do you want to be? And you got to come to the table with having done your assumptions, okay? Because that's not the place to do that in August, okay? And I'll hang out if anybody wants to talk, and if not, it's okay. And they'll hang out if anybody wants to talk, and if not, that's okay. But I really think you got to do this. And, and I, and I, and I love you all. I'm glad they carved it.